Welcome to the afternoon July 2nd session of the Portland City Council. I believe we'll have a full complement of the council here, but let's call a roll and you can amend it as we all arrive.
Saltzman?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Hales?
Here. And I think we have the one item queued up, so, yep, just one. So if you go ahead and read that, we'll start the process.
Item 738, "Improve Land Use Regulations Related to Accessory Short-Term Rentals Through the Regulatory Improvement Code Amendment Package 6."
Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this hearing on the subject of short-term rentals. That one issue is the only item in this package of code amendments that we're still working on. That's obviously why everybody's here. This is a hearing continued from June 4th, and we also had a council work session, which is just an informal process where we have our staff and some resource people to try to work through the issues. We've queued up a whole bunch of potential amendments, which we're going to get to here in a moment. So our process is going to be that we're going to ask Sandra Wood from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to come up and walk us through a series of proposed amendments. The council will take a motion on those amendments and will have them, therefore, on the table. You'll know what we're considering, which will be an amended version of the ordinance that was originally brought forward. So obviously, if you want to testify, you'll be testifying about a changed package, and she'll, again, walk through what those changes are. Some of them are minor, and some of them are more important, but bear with us, and hopefully that will be clear. We're going to limit testimony to two minutes apiece, just because we have so many people here, and we're going to give the first chance to testify to some folks who signed up for the June 4th hearing but then didn't get to testify. So we're going to, I think there are four people, four or five people, that fit that description, and they're going to get the first dibs at testifying this afternoon. And then we're going to ask, we're going to ultimately, at the end of the hearing, vote on those amendments, which call balls and strikes on which ones we want to keep in the package. And then the plan is to bring the amended package back to the council on July 23rd with a final ordinance that reflects these amendments. So that's the plan as it now stands. So again, with that, let's call Sandra up to walk us through the materials in front of us and the proposed amendments, and then I believe Commissioner Fritz has a proposed additional amendment. Okay?
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Sandra Wood with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. Thanks for having me again. And this is, as you said, a continuation of the hearing on June 4th and the work session that was held by council last week. We're working off a memorandum dated June 30th, which includes the amendments that council already has on the table and the additional ones you discussed at the work session. There's copies of the memorandum over there for members of the public, and do all members of the commission have, or the council have it?
Everybody got one?
Because I have extras. Okay. So there are five amendments that we discussed at the work session last week, beginning with the first one regarding inspections. There are basically three options for the council to consider today. The first one is you already put a motion on the, you actually already amended the Planning and Sustainability Commission's recommended draft at the hearing on June 4th. You put the motion on the table, and you voted affirmatively to amend the recommendation. And there, the motion was to require a BDS inspection for the initial permit, a self-certification for renewals every two years, and another BDS inspection at year 10 or with a change of ownership. That was introduced, and that was voted on affirmatively. The option, the second option, which was discussed at the work session, was to change that, that full inspection by BDS from every 10 years to every six years. So that's what the second option is. And of course, you could move to not amend the Planning and Sustainability Commission's recommendation.
Which was, in that case, that the Bureau of Development Services conducts both the initial inspection and the subsequent inspections, right?
Exactly. Yep, and renewals every two years.
Okay.
I don't know if you all wanted to put, make a motion at this point, or run through them all first, or...
It's the council's pleasure. I was assuming, perhaps, since you had this in memo form, that we might run through the whole package first, and then perhaps be able to vote on them as a package, or pull them out as needed? Any preferences here?
That would be easier, I think, with the little discussion, just to see how we get that in a motion, and maybe, yep.
Okay, let's try that. Let's try to do it as a package.
Okay, sounds good. So Amendment B is the carbon monoxide detector, which was introduced by Commissioner Saltzman on June 4th, and that's the, the code language is attached to that, which would, the motion was to require a carbon monoxide detector in each bedroom when, when we're inspecting it. We would check for that also.
And I think it would be appropriate, since it's a simple matter, for Commissioner Fritz to talk about her suggested friendly amendment.
The friendly amendment. BDS staff and Tom Bezo in my office noted that you wouldn't need a carbon monoxide detector if there was no potential source of carbon monoxide. So in state law, the carbon monoxide detectors are required when a source exists, a source such as a heater, a fireplace, appliance, cooking source that uses coal, kerosene, petroleum products, wood, or other fuels that emit carbon monoxide as a byproduct, or an attached garage with an opening that communicates directly with the living space. So my amendment is to add where detector is required by law in 33207040A4C.
Okay, so just where, would otherwise be required, because that kind of combustion device was in the house, you have to have one in this case? Okay. Doesn't every house have a combustion source?
No, not if it has electric. Electric...
So I just wrap my head around this issue when your staff brought it up. So my understanding is that if a house has all-electric furnace, water heater, electric everything, no fireplace, and no attached garage, then they would not have a source of carbon monoxide, and therefore not have to have the carbon monoxide detector. That's, and... Is that correct? That's correct. BDS tells me.
And then to clarify, do we want a detector in every bedroom, or just on, one on the floor where the bedrooms are located?
I think you're required to have a smoke detector in every bedroom, right? Again, it's whatever the code would require, right?
So I think it's one carbon monoxide detector on the floor where the bedrooms are located.
So that's part of the amendment.
That's why you've, yeah, you've crossed out "in each bedroom."
Right.
Right, okay. So again, it's where it would be required by code. It'd be required on each floor if there's a source of combustion in the house.
Correct.
Or a detached garage. Okay. Okay, so that's on the table as well. So let's keep going.
So Amendment C is about monitoring. This is not a change to the zoning code, but it's an amendment to the ordinance, and the motion was made on June 4th, and you voted affirmatively, which is to amend the ordinance directives to require that the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability return with a monitoring report by September of 2016. So those, that concludes what was already introduced on June 4th. There are two new amendments that you discussed at the work session last week, D and E. So D is how to define primary residence, and we have some code language attached in Attachment D, and there's two options. You could move to require a resident to occupy the dwelling unit for at least six months, or 185 days of the year, or you could move to require the resident to occupy the dwelling unit for at least nine months, which is in Attachment D, option two. And of course, you could move to not amend the Planning and Sustainability recommendation.
Okay.
Okay? The last amendment on this memo is the designees. At the work session, we talked about who can operate the short-term rental, and the idea here is that you could move to allow that the residents' designee operate a short-term rental. So they could operate it, they could hire a neighbor to operate it, their family member can operate, or they could hire a property management company, or someone else, to operate it. So that is a potential for a motion. Of course, you could also not amend the Planning and Sustainability's recommendation, which was that the resident is the operator. Those are the five amendments.
Okay. So you want to take those up now, and then we can move on to additional amendments after So questions or discussion before we take a motion on the package of amendments as suggested by the bureau, which again is in Item A, to require a BDS inspection for the initial permit, self-certification every two years, and another BDS inspection at year six or with a change of ownership. For the carbon monoxide detector, the amended language that Commissioner Fritz has proposed to require a carbon monoxide detector where required by law, and that is, specifies both how many have to be in the unit and under what conditions. Monitoring, that one would be to require BDS to return by September of next year, sorry, September of 2016, with a monitoring report. To define a primary residence as one in which the resident occupies the dwelling unit for at least nine months of the year, and finally, to allow a resident's designee to operate short-term rental, and make those changes to the proposed code.
I move those amendments.
Okay, so a second?
Second. Mayor Hales?
Yes.
It's me. Hi. For purposes of clarification, you have already adopted Amendments A, B, and C last time.
Yes.
So I guess, in a sense, you need separate motions. One would be with Commissioner Fritz's amendment to Item B.
Oh, you're right.
You need to move that amendment to your prior amendment.
Right, right.
To clarify that.
Okay.
And then you would need a separate motions for D and E. And I guess one question for you is, do you want to simply move, and second, the amendments now allow people to testify, and then circle back and vote on them at the end?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, because we were going to vote on them at the end, I thought we could approve it as a package, but, so you're saying we need to unbundle that?
I think, let's see. Well, the only amendments you need to actually adopt this time would be, if you have, if there's no change to A and C, the amendments you would need to adopt this time at the end would be the modification to B.
Yeah.
And D, and E.
Okay, all right. So then, then the motion, I'll assume that Commissioner Fritz's motion is to adopt the amendments to Items B, D, and E as further amended by today's discussion.
Absolutely, that's what I intended.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, for telling us what we're doing. There is a second to that, I believe?
Yes.
And further discussion?
So the, the only issue that, of the packages before us, before we get to other amendments, the only one that, that I would benefit from a little more conversation about is, is D, the difference in six months and nine months, since there's a difference between whether it's your primary residence or how long you occupy the unit legally. And I just, if someone could give me a quick primer on that one.
Well, yeah, we should hear from staff, and then I suspect there'll be testimony on that question when we take testimony.
So the Planning and Sustainability Commission's recommendation is that a short-term rental is allowed in a primary residence. And so the question came up during the council hearing and during the work session is, how is primary residence defined? If I'm living at the house for, how long do I need to live at the house for it to be considered a primary residence? So we had understood it when we wrote it as primary residence as being, you're at the house the majority of the time, so at least six months. And what you all discussed at the work session was, is six months enough? Should it be nine months, or some other number? And even if it is six months, I think because it has garnered so much attention, and we've all discussed it, I think it would be worthwhile taking out the term "primary residence" and just replacing it with what we are proposing in Attachment D, which is, hmm, which is, it means individual or family who operates accessory short-term rental is there for at least blank number of days during the calendar year, just to make it crystal clear.
And, and that's because we got some legal advice that you can declare something, your primary residence, under, under state law, and that doesn't turn on actually how long you live there?
Yeah, so we looked at tax codes, which is what you discussed also last week, and really, the IRS hasn't, doesn't have a statutory definition for that. The property that the homeowner uses a majority of the time during the year is considered during, during their discussions and decision makings. And key elements that the courts and the IRS have considered includes the voter registrations, where you pay local and state income tax, and the address on your driver's license. So they don't have a specific definition of this, how long you have to be there. They also use the term "permanent residence," so you can be a permanent resident of Oregon and be away for the whole year somewhere, and Oregon is still considered your permanent residence, and you're paying your taxes here. State of Oregon also, the definition doesn't help us out very much. It says, it means the state jurisdiction or physical location where a person lives during any 12-month period more than he or she lives anywhere else during that period. So in thinking about this, I think we've concluded that this reinforces why primary residence isn't a good indicator of how long someone needs to be in the residence.
Just, just to, there's a lot of people that are here today were not with us in the work session, just to put a finer point on it. The young woman who testified the last time we had a hearing, that she lived in one house and rented out another house, under, if we were to take the nine-month rule, then she would only be able to rent out that other house for three months, provided, or what?
No, no. So she is living in a house, and that's her primary residence, and she can rent, she can operate a short-term rental out of her house where she lives 365 days a year.
But not that other house.
The other house, there is no primary residence, and what we're interested in in reserving and making sure that those residences are used for long-term Portlanders.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So further discussion on this package, and then we'll, we'll take an action to put that on the table, and then move on to the next. So roll call on, on this set of amendments?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay, so those are on the table. So now let's take up the next issue.
I think you just voted to adopt these amendments.
We did, sorry.
Okay, I thought you were going to save those and circle back.
We've adopted, I'm sorry, I was assuming we were going to approve these amendments.
Okay.
Conduct the hearing, and then we're going to vote on the final package on the 23rd, right?
Right, right.
We just voted to put them on the table.
Yeah.
All right.
So, sorry if I'm tangling us up.
Yeah, so I think the difference is, you just voted to take the package from the planning commission and amend it.
Yes.
And then you'll hear testimony, versus what we thought we were saying, is that we would put them on the table, you'd hear testimony, and then you would vote on the amendments.
I think that's, the sense of the council is that we are going to take testimony.
Yeah, we're going to take testimony.
Aren't wedded to what we just put on the table.
The distinction, but not a difference.
Right.
All right. Let's do the next one, the same way.
Just as well.
Yeah, maybe better. All right. So Sandra, let's take the next issue, which is the multifamily issue.
So, so I believe there's been some discussion about whether a motion, you wanted to provide, someone wanted to make a motion to allow accessory short-term rentals in multi-dwelling units.
Right, so I'll move that amendment, which is to allow short-term rental use in multifamily residents under certain conditions, which are that the permit be signed by the resident or, and the property owner, or if there's a homeowners association, by the homeowners association.
And just to clarify, this was not discussed at the, I mean, you discussed it at the work session, but you sent us away without drafting any, without drafting any code amendments for it.
Do you have copies of the amendment?
I'm sorry, I thought this was in the memo.
No, I don't have copies of that amendment.
Let's get, let's get paper copies of that amendment, please. So, Susan, can you get that?
I'll certainly second it for purposes of discussion.
So there hasn't been any code language written on it, so the notion is just, you know, allowing this for multi-dwelling structures also. That's, that's the amendment.
All right, so we had quite, we had quite a discussion about this at the work session. So the question is, do we allow this use in multifamily units at all? If we do, do we, do we turn on what the state building code says, or do we turn on our own definitions? It turns out, we're not particularly bound by the state building code. The critical question is, is, is this a legal use in the landlord-tenant agreement between the rental owner and the tenant, or between the homeowners association that has jurisdiction over a condo, and the resident of the condominium who owns their unit but is a member of the homeowners association? So the proposal here is to say, yes, you can operate a short-term rental unit, you can, you can rent out a bedroom in your unit that you live in as a primary residence, if you have the permission of your landlord, if you're a renter, or of your homeowners association, if you're a condominium resident. So in a sense, it's doing for multifamily units what we're doing for single-family with this proposal overall, which is trying to legalize what's already going on in a way that's sensible, and that also respects the landlord-tenant relationship that exists between the owner of the building and the people that live there. So that's the philosophy behind this.
Under your, under the amendment that you're offering, who, whose job would it be to verify, to verify that it had, that the arrangement had the blessing of the, of the homeowner association or the, or the landlord?
Well, in every case, our permitee is the person that we're dealing with. Somebody is coming in and applying for a permit to do this, and they would need to provide documentation, that they, the permitee, would need to provide documentation, that they have their landlord's permission, or their homeowners association's permission to do this.
So our thinking, we've been, as this discussion's been going on, we've also been developing the application materials to, because this is informing, you know, what it is that we want to communicate with the public when they come in for their permits. So the idea is that the resident would be the person coming in for the, for the permit. If they aren't the owner of the property, then they also need to get the property owner's signature, and there's, if they're in a condominium, for example, and there's also a homeowners association, then the president of the homeowners association would need to sign also.
And Sandra, remind me what the notification on single-family residences is, neighborhood notification?
So the neighborhood notification for single-family is for properties abutting the, the, the property.
Yeah.
It's also to recognize organizations, and I think that's it.
So...
And the property owner, too. But now we've, we've covered the property owner with the, with the signature.
So what's the proposed notification, Mayor, in multifamily? The adjacent residences, or the floor, or everybody in the building?
I think the same provision applies, right? It's adjacency.
No, but...
Yeah, so we haven't quite figured that out yet. If this motion, you know, passes, I think we're going to have to deliberate and figure out what's, what's most logical. If it's the homeowners association, I think we can all imagine a big condominium building, it's prob, that's probably sufficient. If you're a triplex on a site, maybe it needs to be to abutting properties.
What if you're just renting, and there isn't a homeowners association? Do you notify the adjacent apartments, or the adjacent homes around the apartment complex? What's your intent, Mayor?
Good question. Our intent is to, is to allow this and then figure out those details, at least if we have to in code, or if not in rule, in terms of what they require in the permit.
Right.
Can I ask a, just a related question?
Mm-hmm.
To what extent has the planning commission worked through the issues of multifamily structures during its deliberations? So what's, what's the extent of the record we have on this issue?
Yeah.
Pro and con?
Yeah, so let me give you a little history of what happened. When we started with this project, we were approaching it from a zoning perspective. So we were saying, should this be allowed in residential zones, both single-dwelling and multi-dwelling zones, and single-dwelling and multi-dwelling development? Our proposal that came out from staff to the community in our discussion draft in January, including allowing it in multi-dwelling structures. After we talked to the community for about seven weeks, this issue really didn't come up very much. I think most of the testimony we heard and the feedback we got from the public was really related to single-dwelling, similar to what you heard at your last hearing. When we started exploring the inspections option, it, we started getting into this issue of which building code is inspected under, and what would we be inspecting for each one of them. And we discovered that indeed it requires a change of occupancy from an apartment, R2 occupancy, to a hotel occupancy, R1, that we discussed at the work session. At that time, we felt that that, coupled with the property owners and home, and condo associations, most of them not allowing them, and sublets not being allowed to regular leases, we, we abandoned that train of thoughts. By the time we proposed something to the planning commission, that was not part of the proposal. So we discussed it, but pretty briefly with the planning commission, because that was off the table at the time.
So Mayor, your amendment says, beginning January 1st, so I take it that six months are designed to work out some of these details?
Exactly.
The, the, the one nuance I would offer, just for our consideration, is this says, we're going to do it, and we're going to spend six months figuring it out. I wonder whether, that there isn't an equally plausible approach, which is to say, we'll take six months to figure out whether we can do it, and then come back to council and take it up, rather than declaring we're going to do something for which we don't really have much of a record?
Well, yeah, this gets to a philosophical question, I think, about the planning commission, too. It's not, we're not an appellate body for the planning commission, in my opinion. What the planning commission should always do is get things to the 90% point. They're, they're an advisory body to the city council, and we ask them as volunteers to do a heck of a lot of work, and we appreciate it. But we don't, I don't expect them to figure out every planning and zoning issue to the last degree, and that all we have to do is either approve their work or send it back. Again, we're not an appellate body for them. They are an advisory body to us. So they took up a lot of issues in this RICAP package, including this one, and they did a lot of work on them, and as Sandra's described, they didn't spend a lot of time on the multifamily issue, but it's certainly come up in our deliberations. Frankly, I think they're, you know, they're important judgment calls in this question, and there are details to figure out. But this is not one of the most complicated issues that we face in the, in the zoning code. It's, are we going to allow short-term rentals in multifamily units as a land use or not? And then are we going to have reasonable permit requirements, and what should they be? The second part, we're welcome to spend more time on after we deal with the zoning code issue, which is what's in front of us now. We also want to give the multifamily industry a chance to be able to communicate with their members and say, okay, this is becoming legal in the city of Portland. It's happening now, but it's becoming legal, and here's how you proceed if you want to allow your, your unit owners in your condo, or your residents in your apartment, to participate in this program by getting a permit to, to use a bedroom in their unit this way.
So just, just to offer a slightly different view of the same issue, I think the process here has been exemplary. You've had a work session, two public hearings, BPS has given us briefing materials. So I think from that point of view, this has been a great process on an issue which actually, from my point of view, is more complicated than I thought going in. I mean, I think there, and the more I've read about other cities grappling with this, I realize that there's all kinds of unanticipated consequences and other things. So I appreciate the thought and care. I will tell you, from, just speaking for myself, the, the issues and cluster of issues around multifamily housing, to me, feel like not just a subset of what we're looking at, but an entirely different set of issues, which, in fairness, have not been given much of a hearing at the commission level, and tangentially have come to us. But even in this, in the conversations I've had with advocates outside of this proceeding, the constant refrain I'm getting is, we don't, we don't know how to approach this particular subject. This is a different matter. So from my point of view, taking additional time to get that right, and doing it not by us, but having the commission do it, and creating a record would be more beneficial for me as a decision-maker than shoehorning it into this discussion, because I don't actually feel that we have an adequate record to make these judgments. And we can spend the time ironing these out, maybe over the next six months, but I'm not sure, I want to signal that we're going to do it until I have a clearer sense of whether we can do it and should do it. And those are different questions. And I... And those are different questions. And I, and I'm saying that with all due, with, I'm giving the, as strong endorsement as I can to the process to date on single-family. But I think the multifamily thing, to me, is a hornet's nest. And what's the, what's the standards, do the buildings have to be brought up to? What are some of the experiences in other cities? What does it mean to get landlord permission? I mean, that, to me, is an invitation to a whole level of fraud. I mean, who's the landlord? How do you verify it's that person's signature? Is a landlord likely to give approval? How have other cities dealt with that? So, I, I appreciate the urgency that your amendment suggests, but I would say, why not kick it to a process for six months and have it come back to council for further consideration? So, that's just...
Yeah, well, I understand the point, but again, it's philosophical. We have a lot of work we want the Planning Commission to do. It's our code, we adopt it. They make recommendations to us, they made a bunch of them to us in this case. The other factor for me, and impelling me to try to do something now, is people are already doing this.
Oh, that, as a matter, that has never been a compelling argument to me, that everybody else is doing it.
So, it might be, it might behoove us, it might behoove us to catch up to what's happening in the marketplace.
Yeah, Mayor, but just, just so we're clear, under that theory, we should just start taxing prostitution. It's also illegal, and it's happening.
Well, come on.
No, I'm saying, there's lots of activity in our community that's not legal. We're not taking a punitive hand on this, but the idea that we should get revenue before we've thought it through, I don't think it's the right approach.
Well, I'm sure that lots of folks have come to testify, so maybe we could take testimony first.
Let's hear from people about this.
I, I also want to hear from the city attorney as to whether you've looked into this proposed amendment with regard to landlord-tenant law, and definition of hotel and vacation rentals and such. So, I'll just put that out there, and that's a concern that I have.
Okay. So, do we want to put this amendment on the table or not? I'll move it.
Yes, I'll second.
All right, further discussion? So, roll call on putting this amendment on the table as well.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
I have a number of questions about this issue that I hope we can explore, but I will vote to put it on the table. Aye.
I can't imagine that I'm going to be persuaded in this afternoon's testimony that this is a good thing to do. I understand that we will be hearing testimony, so I appreciate that, but just to be clear, I don't think this is a good thing to do, so no.
Fish?
No.
Hales?
Aye.
Okay, that's that one. And what else do we have? Maybe nothing? All right, anything left for us in terms of amendments? I don't think so.
Actually, Eric, there's one thing that, sort of actually, like Sandra's suggestion, as to whether it makes sense to offer it as an amendment here. One of the things we heard in testimony before, from Mr. Unger of the Lion and Rose, was that one of, one of the conditions of receiving a permit should be that you agree that, in your advertising, you list the permit number. And I think that was an excellent idea, and I have no idea procedurally where it should, where it should be. But if it would make sense to have that offered as an amendment here, then I would like to offer it.
And I'd second it.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's take up the question of whether that needs to be an amendment, or whether that's a permit condition. In other words, I'm still, I'm still unclear on the boundary between what we have to put into the zoning code, and what we can require as a condition of a permit. Again, we're dealing with a permitee, whether, if, if we approve this whole package, permitee might be a single-family homeowner, or it might be somebody who lives in a condo. They have an obligation to get the permit, and then we can require them to display their license or their permit number in their advertising. We, we have the legal authority to do that. The question is, do we need to put that into the zoning code, or is there some other way to do it?
So, I, I think there's, there's two options. It sounds like if you wanted to proceed, and you think this is a good idea, we could just put it in the application materials and tell people, best practice is for you to put your license number on all advertisement. That would be kind of an informal way of communicating that information. We wouldn't be enforcing on that information, because it's not in one of our city codes. If we wanted to codify it so that we are actually doing enforcement on it, we would, I know I've been talking to Scott Carter from the Revenue Bureau, Terry Williams wasn't able to be with us today, about putting it in Title VI, which is one of the Revenue Bureau's titles, and it would be kind of more akin to what they have in their titles, with business license, et cetera. We certainly don't want to make it a land-use decision that someone's appealing and, you know, taking to Luba, because, you know, they didn't advertise properly. We, we don't really regulate advertising through the zoning code.
Well, help us out here, maybe you and Catherine, and that is, we have a number of conditions that we apply to a permit. If you're remodeling your kitchen, you have to post your permit on the outside of the structure, so that the building inspector can see it. I don't think that's in code, right? Or maybe it is. If those things are in code, then we should put this in code.
Imagine that's in the building code.
It is in code. Okay, so if those things are typically in code, and you don't have, you, the bureau, don't have a lot of administrative rulemaking authority here to do this on your own, then I, I would be inclined to put it in the code, take action on your amendment, put that on the table for what we do in terms of the zoning code, right?
Put it into Title VI.
Into Title VI. So, it would be code, but a different city title.
Okay, so, so...
And, and Steve, would you, again, just explain the scope of what you're proposing?
Um, it would, the requirement would be that, as a condition of receiving a permit to operate one of these short-term rentals, the applicant has to agree to list the permit number in any and all advertisements.
Okay, so that's a motion? That's a second? Further discussion on that? Putting that motion on the table? Roll call.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye.
Done. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you, Sandra. So, we'll move...
Sandra, the, the format you gave it to us again this time, which was a, a chart that had the options, we could check the box and see it.
Yes.
I, I'm tempted to move that we make this mandatory for every complex issue that comes to court council, but what we'd be doing is just taking what BPS has pioneered and apply to everyone else. Just thank you for the way you organized the material.
We highly recommend you do that.
And tell them where they learned it from, yes. All right, thank you very much. All right, so let's take testimony. Again, we have some people that signed up for the previous hearing, we're gonna give them the first opportunity, and then move on to everyone else. We're gonna ask you to keep your comments to two minutes. Obviously, there are a lot of people that would like to speak. If somebody else has repeated your, has already iterated your testimony, and you'd like to wave your opportunity and let others proceed, do so. If you agree with somebody and want to just show a sign of that, wave your hand, we ask that you keep vocal demonstrations to other places than the council chambers. So, again, let's try to move this along, but hear from everyone, if at all possible.
Okay, we have a total of 41 speakers who've requested, and the first three, please come on up, are Maggie Chandler, Carrie Nguyen, and Peter Ovington.
Come on up.
And they will be followed by Nathan Taber, Jason Minor, and Mr. Lightning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
I'll start. Yes, I'm Maggie, and I would like to thank the Bureau of Planning Sustainability and all of you for what I see a really earnest effort to sort this out. Thanks so much. I just want to iterate or reiterate what my situation is, so maybe you can see that I'm a little bit typical of a lot of the people who are benefiting from this. I moved here, retired here five years ago to be with my kids and grandkids. As you know, it's pretty expensive to live in Portland, and I'm able to live three minutes for my kids. But I do need to, a little extra income amount of fixed retirement, and this is the way that I do, to make ends meet. And not only that, but Airbnb has allowed me the flexibility to be involved with my grandchildren, and to participate fully in the rich retirement that's available in this city. I, I paddle, by the way, with the senior group. And also, it's allowed me just that little bit of extra money, so I can go visit my grandchildren in the other state, south of here, every couple, few months. And this year, because of Airbnb, I was able to take my first trip in retirement, and I went to Hawaii. So, I mean, that's just a kind of a common story, but I think it's pretty typical of those of us who are doing. I rent my guest room and the adjacent bathroom, and it's just a little, a little walking-around money. So, I hope we can, and maybe even, maybe even separate these, could we just get approval for that first proposal, and then look at the multiple-family dwelling?
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good afternoon.
Honorable members of Portland City Council, my name is Carrie Nguyen. In the spirit of place-making and the philosophical intent of shared cities, the 30-day criterion differentiating lodger versus renter is outdated. We need a new definition as to not obstruct the efficacy of the invisible hand. Yes to safety equally for all Portland renters. Just this month, my neighbor sold his duplex. His tenants referred to him as an absentee landlord, who, while providing affordable housing, never fixed anything. The electrical inspector told the buyer that it was one of the most hazardous situations he has encountered. Not only were my long-term renting neighbors at risk, my home was at risk if fire had erupted. If safety is the goal, make inspection mandatory for every rental situation. Neighbors will always jeopardize the health and well-being of other neighbors. It is impossible to legislate away this potentiality. That said, I implore your good reasoning to relinquish the onerous requirement for neighbor notification. My neighbors can bring anyone into their home for any duration without notifying me. The distinguishing element is that my guest contributes to my mortgage. All other points of contention stand. Their overnight guests are as subject to the chance dangers of emergency egress as my neighbors may be subject to my guest's behavior. Micro lodging exists in the same vein as food carts, which prosper alongside their restaurant counterpart. We need policy that supports the creative autonomy of Portlanders and grows microenterprise, which is the nutrient base of a healthy local living economy. No one likes being disrupted, yet disruptive technology plays a huge part in long-term economic sustainability. Our position as policymakers should not be to protect the interests of established business from competition, but to steadfastly ensure that our economy has a capacity to resiliently respond to emerging market demands. I regard your visionary leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Peter Ovington. I've been a resident of Portland for the last 15 years, and have lived in a condo in northeast, in the King Neighborhood, for the last seven years. I support home sharing in Portland, and more regulatory certainty for everybody. I attended your last hearing on this topic, and really appreciated your thoughtful consideration and the spirit of creative problem-solving that you showed then, and also today. First, I believe apartments and condos should be allowed to participate in short-term rentals. They make up a big portion of our housing stock. Limiting multifamily rentals, in my view, is classist, because it provides short-term rental income only to single-family homeowners, who are already more well-off than the rest of us, given the way that property values are rising. So, I believe it's an equity issue. Secondly, not, not all apartments and condos are created equal, equally, rather, in terms of their building access and layout. I own a unit in a one-story courtyard condo with a total of 12 units. It's a ground-floor end unit, what the British might call semi-detached. In terms of life safety, it has two obvious visible exits that lead directly outside. As a proud Portland progressive, I never thought I'd use these words, but trying to regulate who can come and go from my condo feels a bit like government overreach and an intrusion on my private property rights. Third, I oppose the primary residence requirement, particularly the notion of increasing it from six to nine months per year. And lastly, I just wanted to say that the notion of stranger danger has been exaggerated by some neighborhood activists. I think you heard enough at the last meeting about how well guests are vetted. Most of my guests have actually been single women, grandmothers visiting from out of state, and the like. So, again, those of us home-sharing on Airbnb, Airbnb and other sites are really Portland's ambassadors, hosting short-term visitors, and I just want to thank you for working to bring Portland into the sharing economy.
Sir, let me just react to the, your characterization of the distinction between single-family and multifamily as being classist. And you're entitled to your view, obviously, but there is one profound difference that we have in the record before us, it's just, we're, we're struggling with. Currently, all of these short-term rentals are illegal. But a owner of a house can agree to rent out his or her space and not violate a covenant. There are virtually every short, every rental agreement that I've seen, and virtually every rule of a condo association prohibits this. So, there's a separate piece that we have to be aware of here. Plus, there are building code issues unique to multifamily and single-family. The mayor and I, I, I'm not opposed to considering this issue. I, I might have a difference of agreement with the mayor about the process, the sequence, but not to considering it. But I think to leap to say it's classist, when they are, in my view, just in my opinion, completely distinct pieces of the, of the, of the, of the shared economy, is a bit harsh. But I just, I offer that for your consideration.
I guess I'm in the unique position, maybe, of having a condo unit that acts a little bit like a single-family home, because my guests use a separate entrance, and they actually don't step foot on what's called the, the general common element of the condo property. So, I don't know that you want to get into that much detail, if you're thinking of multifamily, but for me, it would certainly be helpful.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next three are Nathan Taber, Jason Minor, and Mr. Lightning. They'll be followed by Mary Ann Schwab, Bill Gregg, and Steve Unger.
Mayor Hales, members of the council, my name's Jason Minor. I'm the executive director of 1,000 Friends of Oregon. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I sent a letter after the first hearing outlining four principles, getting to that question of philosophy, that I think should guide your decision today. And I want to get straight to the number three and number four principles that were in that letter, because I think they address the issue of extending this policy to rentals and condominiums. And they were that our planning code should encourage access to prosperity, not deny it. I think there's a traditional model of building wealth in a home, and that's single-family homeownership, and it's been, as pointed out at the last hearing, the primary source of wealth for many Portlanders. But there's a new model of building wealth that you heard a lot about at the last meeting, and that is sharing your greatest asset with people who've come to Portland. And I think that it should extend to people in rental units and condominiums as well, many of them trying to build wealth, just as anybody in a single-family house is. And the fourth principle that I outlined, and I think it's critically important, and gets, again, to the question of philosophy, is you have the opportunity to make the sharing economy a more equitable economy than the traditional economy. And I think that, too, poses the challenge and the question of, should we draw a hard line between one style of residence, one style of home, and another style of home? And this policy clearly does that. That's why I encourage that the step taken today should actually be to adopt the amendment, and work over the next six months as to the details that, that line it out. Specifically, there are, there are mechanisms in place for landlords and homeowners' associations to prevent this from happening in condos and, and apartments that they currently own. What doesn't currently exist is a place for a landlord or a homeowners' association or a renter to take advantage of this benefit, the benefit that the city council is looking to pass. And that's, that's the umbrella that you would provide by accepting the amendment. And lastly, I'd just like to emphasize that in a city in which we are trying so hard to encourage multifamily development, and people taking advantage of our corridors and town centers, I would encourage you to consider adopting the amendment and considering multifamily units on parity with single-family homeownership. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. Thank you very much for seeing us. My name's Nathan Taber. I live in Southeast. Things have changed since I wrote a letter to you guys last week. The multifamily thing, I guess, is being, taken another look at. I just wanted to say, you know, my prime concern is I would not be able to rent out a spare room in my condo. I am there 95% of the time. I'm with people who come to my home and share my neighborhood and add to the community, as far as I'm concerned. It's alarming to me that, even though I pay my income tax from Airbnb, I pay Portland's staggering property tax rates, and then also travelers are now getting taxed, or they will, that, that I'm being treated like, like a non-property owner. It just seems like I shouldn't be lumped in with apartment owners, when in every other facet, I'm not treated the same. You know, where I live, there are no hotels. So, you know, a lot of people I know wouldn't be coming to Portland if they couldn't stay, you know, near Reed, or near friends and family, or if they had to pay $300 a night to stay downtown. They just, they wouldn't bring their money here. And this helps me, I mean, it helps the community, it helps the coffee shop around the corner, the breakfast joint I send them to every morning.[1752.51] And it just, I don't know, it really, I think it helps the community, especially as the southeast changes in demographic and becomes more of a city center kind of area. You know, I don't want to rehash things that people are going to say over and over again. So, you know, I sent you a letter last week. Hopefully, you guys got a chance to read it and kind of what I say.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Afternoon, Lightning.
My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Think Lab. I find it interesting on the multifamily, how many landlords, if, say, you have a 50-unit apartment building, is going to want a bunch of people coming in and out of units that you've rented to maybe one or two people upon your lease. There's going to have to be some type of an incentive for a landlord to do that. The liability is going to be tremendous on having more people coming in and out of his building on a regular basis, so him agreeing to that is almost going to be zero. Another issue I have is on Airbnb is that, we always hear Airbnb. I don't have a problem with these short-term rentals. I do have a concern with some people who want to, what they consider maintain the character of their neighborhoods, don't have kind of a hotel-type motel-type situation in their residential neighborhoods. I understand their position and I respect their opinions. One of the concerns I have is I don't want to see a monopoly by one company like Airbnb. We're talking shared economy. Why don't we start talking some of the local property management companies? And they have the ability to create software systems. They have the ability to use the internet. And why don't we compete against Airbnb and take care of some of the residents in Portland? Because all I'm hearing is Airbnb, and I'd like to hear some other companies. We're talking shared economy. Let's get some other companies coming in and competing with Airbnb, and let's make this thing happen, and let's get some lodging tax going toward the city, but let's get the real competition going against Airbnb. I don't see anything about Airbnb that that's incredible. They're a company that has probably virtually no assets. They're $10 billion net worth. I find that amazing that they do that, but why not, is there other companies stepping in, local companies that are competing against Airbnb on this situation? And the hotel industry must be up in arms on this because obviously that's directly affecting their businesses and it will decrease their revenue base. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay.
The next three are Mary Ann Schwab, Bill Gregg, and Steve Unger. And they'll be followed by Gary Cash, Matt Curtis, and Cliff Johnson.
I think you're on first, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I agree with Senator, excuse me, where am I? The city, okay. Commissioners.
None of us is running for that office. So we know.
Start over again.
Are there announcements here that I haven't heard?
Start that three-minute clock again, please. That's a two-second clock. Okay. I agree with Commissioner Dan Solsman. It's time we put these short-term rental businesses into the light. And to that, I would add, on so many levels, the city collecting the 11.5 hotel tax, businesses paying income taxes, and I'm talking short-term businesses, and the immediate neighbor's right to a restful night's sleep between 10 o'clock and 7:00 in the morning. Right now, our city noise ordinance has no tool to monitor or put fines out. I'm pleased that Airbnb is setting the bar high for the Portland B&amp;B one-two-bedroom short-term rental 24/7 commercial businesses by posting the inspectors' numbers online, and I'd like to see them add to the houses. When we were in Austria last September, every guesthouse had their buildings inspected and they were posted, "guesthouse." And also, by facilitating collection of the 11.5 hotel tax, I know Terry Williams is tracking that, and hopefully to ensure their clients pay their shared economy the rental income with IRS sending the 1099 forms for their clients. On a side note, when our children were making 12% interest at Ben Franklin, we had to pay the taxes on that income. And again, we need to bring this to the light. And as for opening up our apartments and our multifamily condos, those I picture along division Hawthorne Belmont, to have strangers coming and going, I don't think is a public safety. It's not shared economy. It's protecting those, they've signed the contract, they've been interviewed, managers have approved their circumstance financially to go into that unit, they've signed a note saying they know they'll be quiet from 10 o'clock to 7:00 in the morning. That's a safe house. And one little thing I'd like to add out, the highest number of registered pedophiles in the state of Oregon happens to live in 97214. And how do we vent that? How do we vent bedbugs? Who does laundry? There's lots of issues. I would have preferred that this be taken off the table and thoroughly vented, as suggested by Southeast Uplift. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Bill Gregg, Buckman Neighborhood. I'm for like a nine-month requirement for residency, and I'm wondering, are they going to be allowed to rent out their two rooms during the time that they're not there without a host? Sort of is what could effectively be a whole-house rental. Secondly, if council rightfully chooses to not allow apartments and whole unhosted houses, will Airbnb, who has spent tons of money to lobby the city, also be taking these listings down from their site in Portland? Or will they do as they always have, using a catch-me-as-you-can-if-you-can way of doing business? Short-term rentals have been hyped by the PR department of Airbnb as being part of a new sharing economy. There was a site before Airbnb called Couchsurfing, where people would actually have people staying there without any kind of monetary interest. And this was true sharing. I have a problem seeing that a commercial transaction between two parties facilitated by a huge soon-to-be-public company now worth $10 billion, with them taking a fee on each transaction, how that has anything to do with sharing. Finally, in conclusion, as a businessman, I've always been surprised at the efforts to reduce the amount of compliance needed to become a short-term rental. The lower barrier to entry that exists, the easier for more and more people to be doing this. With a finite amount of business out there, especially in the non-summer months, available business that will be there will be split amongst a larger and larger number of hosts. This may benefit Airbnb, but not the individual host. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Stephen.
Hi. So first, I wanted to say that personally, I support Airbnb private-room-host resident rentals. I use it when I travel to visit our kids and grandkids in Salt Lake. It's a huge value. Second, I'd like to say, from a policy perspective, I think that the three issues are limited commercial use of residential property, maintaining the rental housing stock, and having ordinance enforceability. And about the limited commercial use, what I would say is, when we got out of bed and breakfast, well, we have unconditional use permit, BDS just told me that because we made limited commercial use of a residential property, we would be subject to limitations and restrictions that regular homeowners weren't subject to. And I just accepted that. And I think that this is partly what's going on here, and this is why homeowners who do make limited commercial use of residential properties have to take some reasonable amount of extra things that a regular homeowner doesn't. Also, I was very pleased about the license number requirement getting some positive review. And I think that this can only do good, it really can't do harm. And regarding this host residency, I beat my brain on this problem a lot, and I came up with this idea that if you said, a host has to be resident, and what that means is be present on the property four hours a day, even when they were, even if it was when they were sleeping. So there's a host, have to be on the property four hours a day, could be while they're sleeping. And then you said, 30 days a year, they could be absent if they gave their neighbors notice. This would allow them, Airbnb hosts, to go away on vacation 30 days a year and rent their property. They could rent it all year as a private-room rental when a host was present, four hours a day. The last thing is about enforceability, and that has to do with the idea that a complaint-driven system won't protect the rental stock. A complaint-driven system can work if a neighbor has a problem about noise, parking problems, nuisance. But a neighbor will not call BDS Compliance Hotline and say, "A unit was removed from the rental stock." And when, so when BDS or BPMS says, "Well, just leave it be complaint-driven," that won't work as a way of ensuring rooms, rental properties, maintain themselves. And then I would just say, I've always felt you need a phase two. I always put apartments and condos in phase two, and then we need a vacation rental ordinance for unsupervised vacation rentals. And I would urge you basically to hire a planner for a year, have them review 20 ordinances from around the country, and draft ordinance for Portland. The first year that ordinance was in effect, the return on investment would probably be about 300% from lodging tax. I would rather have all these rentals regulated appropriately than operating illegally.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next three are Gary Cash, Matt Curtis, and Cliff Johnson. And they'll be followed by Mike Kirk, Eric Schmidt, and Diane Henderson.
Good afternoon. Who's first?
Good afternoon. Gary? I'm Gary Cash. Hi. I'm a pretty simple guy, a pretty simple little spiel here, and that's that Airbnb has really given me a chance at life after some pretty hard events. In October, when I heard about Airbnb, I was at the end of my unemployment, I was at the end of my Cobra Insurance. I had given up my professional career as a clinical director at a health clinic to take care of my then-dying partner, who was dying of stage-four cancer. So he passed away two years later, or two months later. There was no health insurance or anything, and I tried. I have a master's degree in education. I couldn't find anything to support my mortgage. And when it all seemed like it was just done, I learned about Airbnb. At the same time, I moved my father, who had been homeless for 10 years, and it took me seven years to find him, I moved him in with me. Same month, I opened my first room and took my first guest, and then my father developed dementia. So seven months later, Airbnb has allowed me to keep my house, has allowed me to get caught up on my mortgage. I'm home every day to take care of my father, every day. And also, my late partner was a landscaper, and he had one dream, and that was he was going to landscape a garden that people would tour. And every day that I have Airbnb guests, they tour my partner's garden. Young lady from Singapore, who's a photographer, spent half of the day Saturday photographing my garden. This is what Airbnb has done to me, all the legalities I don't know about, but I've lived in my house 18 years and I'm getting to keep it today because of Airbnb. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Curtis, and I'm the Government Relations Director for All Worldwide Governmental Relations for HomeAway. We're actually the largest short-term rental company in the world. We have over a million listings around the world in 190 countries. And I'm the guy that actually flies around the world and works with city councils and mayors and city staffs around the world on this issue. There's probably nobody else who has this job or would want it. It's because I do get to fly around a lot, which is neat. Unfortunately, I do use the Portland story a little bit in my presentations when I do go and speak with other city councils. In July of 2012, I called over the period of two days and I spoke with nine different offices, trying to find out what exactly your short-term rental regulation was, and could not get clarity from any office. And eventually, the clarity I found was folks actually admitting that the regulation was very, you know, it wasn't easy to follow and it wasn't easy to understand. There was a real lack of clarity and the inability for short-term rental owners and operators to be compliant. A cursory review of short-term rental listings in the Portland area found about that the oldest ones seem to be 15 to 20 years old in the area. So you had listings here that had been around for a long time. So when we talked about the unintended consequences, there are folks who probably have been operating as a short-term rental, in a traditional short-term rental, for 15 or 20 years, that might, in the scenario where they're not able to operate anymore, be essentially not able to continue to conduct their business. I was the chief of staff for the former mayor of Austin and the current mayor of Austin and for a council member before that, and we fought a short-term rental regulation there that went on for a two-year-long discussion. It went very, very long, but one of the things we found out is, for traditional short-term rentals, the average length of stay is a little bit more. It's 6.8 days, the average party size is 5.1 people, the average nightly stay is $250 a night, and the average age of the party is $44. So basically, you have, or I'm sorry, 44 years old. So basically, you have an older group of people, a larger group of people, staying for a longer period of time. And I can probably get--
No, keep going. You've come some distance. We'll give you some extra time.
I appreciate that. What are the kinds of travelers? Well, you know, they tend to be folks, we have 28% have a graduate degree and 36% college degree, 19% with some college degree. This is a guy named Alan Kamen, who came to Portland just earlier this year, and he came up here with his three adult daughters, stayed at a traditional short-term rental and had a good time while here, and they loved going to Powell's Books and they had a really good time. But wouldn't be willing to come if he didn't have the opportunity to have that entire home and feel like they would be able to be the residents of that entire home. In 2012, the US Conference of Mayors passed a resolution that basically said that the easiest way to create a short-term rental regulation is to make it fair and effective and easy for the owners and the managers to follow it. What's interesting is, in 2014, there was a resolution this summer regarding short-term rentals, where it urged support to basically include the traditional short-term rental in the regulation. Now, doing a poll in partnership with the Oregon VRMA, we found that 69% of Portlandians actually support traditional short-term rentals as part of the local economy. 67% believe that they should be legal in Portland, and even 60% of those believe that the regulation should be just fair and clear and easy to follow, while 29% feel that the registration program is not even necessary at all. So you actually have a really strong support for the traditional short-term rental community in Portland.
May I just interrupt?
Yes, sir.
Can we assume that 11% favored an unfair and unclear registration program?
It must be so. And I'm happy to share that poll and the full questions and all the cross-taps of that poll with you as well. The economics, well, you know, an economist not too long ago did a study and found that the entire overall economic impact of the activities, 46.5 million for the entire community, and it benefits the jobs to about 375. This is a guy named Roberto Camarillo, who came to Portland back in February, and he stayed with his son and his son's family in Lads Edition. They were visiting his daughter and his son, who just had a new baby, and they already had an existing baby, so the family's house was too small. But they didn't want to stay in a hotel too far away. They wanted to stay in a house, and they wanted to be able to share that whole activity as a family. When we start to look at the economics and the poll and the best practices, we also probably want to talk about where there are some worse practices. In New York, when they banned short-term rentals in 2010, they doubled down on the ban with a heavy fine in 2011. Now there's about four and a half times, I'm sorry, yeah, four and a half times the number of short-term rentals since before the ban, but they are not able to, you know, enforce that ban even with a higher fine in New York. They did the same thing in Palm Desert, California, except Palm Desert came back just a little while later. In about 2008, they actually regulated short-term rentals and allowed traditional short-term rentals to be active in the community. Now they feel they have 100% compliance in Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage, Cathedral City, and other cities in Southern California. So actually, fine with a fair and easy and effective registration program, they're actually able to have much higher levels of compliance. So looking at all the regulations around the country, I think while this is a phenomenal step in the right direction from my phone call in July of 2009, or, I'm sorry, my call in July of 2012, when I called nine different offices and was not able to find any kind of an answer about what the registration program was, I think this is a huge step in the right direction to create a registration program and a regulatory atmosphere that works. However, I feel that if we could get the owners and the managers of the traditional short-term rentals to the table, include them to talk about best practices and proven resources, to understand the needs of the traveler, remember Alan, who came up here with his daughters, or Roberto, and to have a data-driven conversation with the entire stakeholder, which includes the traditional short-term rental owner and operator, that's when I think you're actually going to find the highest success rate and the greatest amount of compliance. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, just as somebody who works in the industry--
No, thank you. This is real helpful. So Commissioner--
All the way here, we hope, actually, you consider buying a place.
Funny that you say that.
First, since you've done a lot of polling, did you get a sense of whether there's any consensus around a street fee proposal? Was there any one option that sort of, okay. So Austin, in the stuff that we've pulled off the internet, San Francisco, Austin, and New York come up a lot. So we have the benefit of someone who knows Austin pretty well. So a couple of questions. What has been Austin's experience with multifamily?
Well, they just created, so basically, they separated the entire regulatory atmosphere into three frameworks. If you want to think of it easily, type one would be more of somebody renting their apartment or their, I'm sorry, their home, their property, just for the occasional weekend. That was a type one. Type two would be a traditional short-term rental, and type three would be multifamily. They only implemented the type-three multifamily regulation, I believe it was probably March, so it's fairly new. It was just something that actually was left out of the original regulation. What they did do is they have a cap per building that essentially limits the number of short-term rentals that could be in every building. People do have to register and pay a registration fee. I think it's yet to be seen what the success rate of that is. I think it's yet to be seen what the success rate of that is.
Success rate in terms of bringing it out from under the shadows, or success rate in terms of this regulatory scheme working?
Well, the success rate from this one working, particularly because they created a very high fee. I think if Austin made us, one flaw that the council, it's a council manager, former government, the council, the man, the city council really stressed having a very low fee. The city staff implemented a $275 fee for everyone to register. So for your occasional multifamily registrant, that may hamper the registration. I think if you asked most of the council members, they would have said, when they said low, they meant $20.
And sir, the other question I had, and this has come up in, particularly in San Francisco, do you have any initial data on the impact of short-term rentals on the inventory or stock of affordable rental housing?
It's good that you say that, you know, it's interesting, the traditional short-term rentals, so the standalone home that's being rented out as a short-term rental most of the year, we don't have, we don't see a whole lot of traditional short-term rentals in urban areas. So in Austin, the estimate at any given time is, we probably have about 300. In San Francisco, I haven't gauged anyone on the actual number, but it's not a lot. And we're also talking about multimillion-dollar properties, very, very expensive homes that have probably been, you know, pet of tears, if you will, you know, people's second homes for a long time. We haven't heard or seen any real, real data on what that does to the kind of housing stock, but in Austin, Texas, if you think it's the 11th largest city in the United States, 300 homes isn't taking a lot of housing stock off the, off the table. And it seems like in your urban areas, the traditional short-term rental is not a major component of the short-term rental atmosphere, like kind of more of your, you know, occasional short-term rental would be. Did that answer your question?
Good, thank you. Other questions?
Do you happen to know if Austin addressed the issue of who needs to be notified in multifamily housing?
They did, and they have a neighbor notification. They have an existing notification strategy that works for a variety of zoning and land use issues, where the neighbors within a certain distance will get a letter. And in this case, when a regis, when somebody registers for a short-term rental, the neighbors in a, in a certain distance, I want to say it's 100 feet, if I remember correctly, and I'm happy to give that answer for you.
That applies in multifamily housing?
Yes, I believe it does, and I'll verify that for you, but I'm confident that it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
This is, this is actually a good time to ask a lot of questions, because I'm the one who has to grill over this stuff all the time, it's painful at times, but-
Well, you're, you know, as, as we move forward with this, assuming that we, we're moving forward with all or portion of this, I think your assistance and other, other companies that are doing this work will be very helpful. So we want to, we appreciate you coming today, getting in touch with us, and two, obviously, there's more refinement to do regardless of what we do in the next couple of weeks. So we hope we can continue to call on you as a resource and make you have to fly back to Portland again.
Please, I'm happy to, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, welcome.
Hi, thank you for your time today. My name's Cliff Johnson, I'm the co-founder of Vacasa. We're a local vacation rental property management company. We formed the company here in 2009. We manage over 1,000 rentals in six states, 135 jurisdictions, none of which are in Portland. One of the reasons we do that is we're, we have strict compliance with local codes and laws, we don't manage homes that are illegal or rentals. And one of the things that we see as a common thread that happens is, whenever you overregulate rentals or make the, make the ordinance in such a, such a way that it's very difficult to comply with or understand, people just don't do it. And now, this happens all over the coast, we manage several homes out on the coast, and there's several different ways of doing it. Cannon Beach has a very restrictive way of doing it. Other places like Tillamook County are very open and obvious what you're supposed to do, there's a low barrier to entry, and people comply with those laws. And so what we're really looking to promote here is, you know, giving the option for people to understand what the law is and how they can comply with that, create a low barrier to entry, and also create enforceability for the law. One of the things I'd also like to focus is the difference between, Matt alluded to traditional short-term rentals, and what, a lot of this law that we're looking at now is addressing room shares or atypical vacation rentals, it really isn't addressing, you know, the three-bedroom and higher homes. And it's somewhat of an arbitrary distinction in the sense that, you know, we're going to allow this activity because we know it's happening, but we're not going to allow the traditional activity. Whereas, that's the activity that is very unlikely to be competing with affordable housing. As Matt said, a lot of times, they're million-dollar homes, they're snowbirds, where they spend six months in Portland, six months in somewhere else, they want to rent that, and it's going to create a lot of jobs. I mean, we've created 325 jobs in four years, 200-plus of those are in Oregon, several of them in Portland, despite the fact that we can't do business in Portland, and we could create 300-plus if we had the opportunity to manage traditional short-term rentals here.
So maybe a question for both you and Matt. So typically, in these other city ordinances, I mean, we have, as you said, we've come into this through the door of what the zoning code allows in single-family neighborhoods, and now we've broadened that a bit, but we're not yet addressing the question of traditional vacation rentals. Is it typical in other cities that they, that they are regulating it, and are there some best practices? Well, you mentioned some, Tillamook County, you know, other, other best practices we ought to look at, because we've not yet opened that door, really, in the, in the regulatory work that we're doing here?
Definitely. I would state, Tillamook County, it's a recent ordinance, and a lot of the ones that have done it recently have taken a view where they look at several different cities and take the best practices from each city, what's working really well. Newport just went through this as well, and they did a really great job, they really engaged the community. It took them a little while, but not nearly as long as Lincoln City is taking, and it ended up with a resolution that really has gone well in the city. It's increased their room taxes. And what they had before was similar to Portland, where it was somewhat of an unwritten illegal law, you know, it was, you could rent your house 10 times per year, there was really no way of enforcing, whether people were renting more than that or less. And as a result, they came up with an ordinance that's very easy to comply with, I mean, it requires an inspection, which is great, I mean, safety is one of our biggest concerns in our homes, we don't want any of our guests getting injured, that's a liability issue for us, too. And that's something I would bring up as well, is this law doesn't really give a, a place for, to develop vacation rental property management companies within Portland. And those companies will help bring people, you know, to the surface, make them comply with the law, make them understand the law. If there's not a place for them, and we're not going to engage, engage in activities so we can rent out a $50 a night room, there's not enough money in that for us, you know, to be frank, but it's also, I don't see the benefit to the community as much as I do bringing in people, visitors that wouldn't come here otherwise, that are going to spend more money, and they're also going to be good visitors, they're going to be families that are, you know, willing to, you know, only willing to come here and stay a longer period, like we said, if they have that option.
Good, thank you. Matt, other places that you can think of that address this vacation rental by owner kind of situation?
Certainly, you know, in Austin, Austin and Portland worldwide are really viewed by so many people as best-practice communities. I mean, honestly, I come from a neat city, and I'm coming to the neatest city. But seriously-
I like hearing that.
Especially from Austin.
But the, you know, we are, we are the best-practice communities. Everybody is so sick of hearing about Austin and Portland, whenever they talk about how to do things, from placemaking to transportation and so on, but we do it well. And I think Austin would be a great place to start. I think that unfortunately, because, and there's probably a lot of small-town examples, but that's where a lot of the short-term rental activity was happening traditionally. So you would be looking at places like the Coachella Valley towns I mentioned, like Palm Desert. An interesting thing in those conversations is, you'll run across a city planner named Cindy Goslin. Cindy was the one who actually banned, or worked to ban, the short-term rentals in 2002, I believe it was, in Palm Desert, only to come back and add a extreme-high fee for people who are engaging in the activity still in 2005, only to come back in 2008 or 2009 and say, what are we doing? They're obviously still operating just under the radar, let's build a registration program that's fair and easy to follow. That's been very successful, and she's taken that and replicated that in dozens of cities around the United States. So the Coachella Valley communities, Cindy Goslin, the city planner there, Austin would probably be some good places to start.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, very helpful, thank you all.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Next.
Are Mike Kirk, Eric Schmidt, and Diane Henderson. And they'll be followed by Matthew Tezdahl, Betsy Labarge, and Judy Crockett.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Michael Kirk. I just want to talk about some of the positive impacts, positive financial impact to the traditional short-term rental industry. This industry generates in cities that are of our size and population in between 40 and 50 million per year in revenue annually, and that taxable revenue could certainly be used to further some of our tourism activities and other city development projects. Traditional short-term rentals generate other revenue for our communities through restaurants, purchasing activities, people visiting our local attractions, the type of things that we want to bring outside visitors into our community and get to know Portland, and consider us a place that they want to return on a annual basis, hopefully. Traditional short-term rentals also have another benefit where people are using these properties as a, as their second home, they're paying property taxes on those particular locations, but they're not using a lot of the services that are associated with that, such as schools, you know, the, the kids that, that would be normally living in these properties on a full-time basis, if they're the primary resident, aren't there, they're in another home, in another place, maybe in another state, but are still paying those fees to help generate money for our schools and other activities, and not using other city resources that would traditionally be in a full-time resident property.
Sir, just on the point you just raised-
Yes.
The amendment that's now on the table requires that the owner occupy the home for nine months of the year, so that would seem to go against what you're saying, the benefits of extending this program to second homes that happen to be in Portland.
Sure.
So do you have a comment on that?
No, probably my misunderstanding of the actual ordinance that we're discussing, or the amendment that's on the table, I apologize.
Well, I'm not, I just wanted to clarify that, I was listening to your point-
Sure.
You make an eloquent point, but the amendment on the table would effectively prevent the person that has the second home that they don't occupy that's in Portland, it would prevent them from renting it out for short-term rentals, because they can't establish that they are an owner-occupant for nine months of the year.
Sure, understood, okay. Also, wanted to discuss, as far as the tourism industry things, as far as our rental inventory for people visiting our community, one of the benefits here is, we don't have to build other hotels and things to house potential future tourism coming into our, our community, we can house them in existing inventory that is participating in some of this traditional short-term rental activity.
And I think, in your testimony and some earlier today, and also last time, that sort of demonstrated, I mean, one way to think about this is the old three-door thing, you know, door number one is single-family homes that are renting out rooms, door number two is multifamily structures, whether they're condos or apartments, and door number three is, is short-term vacation rentals of the whole house-
Sure.
Booked through somebody. And the planning commission opened door number one, and we've opened door number two, and we haven't yet opened door number three, though we know it's there. And I think the fact that you and others testified to it shows that we sort of, we still have more work to do on this issue, even after we've resolved the question of, how do we deal with single-family homes, how do we deal with multifamily units? We have not yet written code, or the planning commission hasn't even written a proposal about the third issue, but we, I think this hearing and the one before it have helped highlight the fact that this also is going on here and elsewhere. It's not currently legal, what do we want to do about it?
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is Eric Schmidt. I guess I would also like to touch on door number three briefly.
Maybe I've set up a game show here.
Yeah, so in the fall of 2013, I was unexpectedly laid off from my job. For the first time in about 15 years, I found myself out of work without anything lined up. Very quickly found myself struggling with the current crowded job market, and I learned a harsh truth about Portland, and that is that the average wage for jobs is surprisingly low compared to the drastically higher rents and cost of living that we're experiencing. I was fortunate, I found Vacasa Rentals, and again, my period of unemployment was rather short. What I really would like to address is the possibility of economic growth through the potential of converting Portland homes into traditional short-term rentals, with the creation of those properties, the need for qualified maintenance staff, housekeeping, job opportunities for, for people on, excuse me, on an ongoing basis in the industry, that would provide steady, reliable jobs for people who may be struggling, like I was, to re-enter the workforce in a timely manner, or people that want to advance in their current careers. Vacasa provides flexibility in our workforce with housekeepers, maintenance people, for the opportunity to go back to school, get education, take care of your kids, and not worry about where you're living and how you're going to pay the rent. To limit the legalization of vacation rentals to short-term rentals of rooms in a primary residence, I really feel like Portland would miss the opportunity to boost the local job market by allowing companies like Vacasa to create a new and reliable source of job opportunities for people at all levels of career development. By allowing companies to start creating jobs with competitive pay, the city is directly helping us to afford housing in this increasingly expensive rental market for long-term Portlanders so we can continue to stay in the city we love. I urge you to give consideration to expanding the parameters of what you're looking at.
Thank you, thanks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm going to be talking about promoting all three doors. So, to start the short-term rental industry in Portland-
Just give your name for the-
Diane, Diane Henderson. To start the short-term rental industry in Portland should not be shaped by one type of rental alone, room shares, typically marketed on Airbnb. Over the past couple of weeks, headlines controlling the media have been, quote, "Portland City Council to vote on whether to legalize Airbnb rentals." "Airbnb near deal with Portland over short-term rentals, sharing economy." Or how about, "Portland tries to make peace with Airbnb as sharing economy moves into the mainstream," and the list goes on. The conversation and vote should not be about the domination of Airbnb, but how the short-term vacation rental industry as a whole can benefit the great and unique city of Portland. To illustrate, I would like to share an experience of my cousin, who stayed in Portland after accepting a job offer in downtown Portland, and why limiting the rules and regulations to room shares are curtailing the bigger picture. As an avid traveler and subsequent user of Airbnb and vacation rentals, my cousin knows the benefits of a space as a little slice of home in every travel experience, lauding the economic benefits of a private kitchen, bath, and private space. However, in Portland, under the current and proposed laws, what would he experience? Either A, a room or two in which negates the desire of privacy, or B, using a private condo or apartment illegally, or in my cousin's case, a converted office building, which was seemingly run as a downtown hotel, where the onus of regulation and safety are out of the guest's hands. I want to make this understood that I'm not advocating to get rid of room shares, as I do believe that room shares fulfills a market niche, but that's it, a niche. We are simply wishing to provide more options for consumers. The vacation rental industry proves that not every guest wants to stay in a cookie-cutter hotel. Consumers desire to live like a local, but in Portland, guests and tours are limited to the services and quality control of room shares alone. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you all.
The next three are Matthew Tezdahl, Betsy Labarge, and Judy Crockett. And they'll be followed by Nicole Pelz, Deborah Emzie, and Alice, Alisa Christensen.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
I think, you're first, Matthew.
All right.
Figured out which one was Matthew.
Yeah. If I can't do that, you don't want me up here, yeah.
Thank you for allowing us this time to speak. I'm Matthew Tezdahl. My wife and I own a property management company that manages traditional short-term rentals, predominantly in Utah, but we live here in Oregon. We would like to, there's two things I want to point out. One is, we'd, we'd like to operate here in Oregon, here in Portland, we love Portland, we actually live in Vernonia, but we would like to do it safely and honestly, and, you know, like Vacasa was talking about. And I like the direction you guys are going, I was at the last meeting and earlier, June 4th, I think, and I like the direction you're going, but I'd, I'd like you to open up all doors, one, two, and three, to people who, who have a home here, but for some reason don't live here anymore, whether it was a job transfer or something, but they intend to come back, and they need to make some revenue on that, instead of just sitting here with not making any revenue, or doing long-term rental. That's number one. So I'd like to see all three doors open. Number two is, my, we have five children, so my wife and I and our five children, we have been coming to Portland for, since 2001, we moved here two years ago. They, we could never stay in Portland, because it's really difficult to stay in a hotel room with five kids, or even two rooms. And so we always went to Mount Hood, or- And so we always went to Mount Hood, or Hood River, or down into the Willamette area to stay. Instead, and even last week, when we went on vacation for four or five days, we actually went to another city in Portland, I mean, in Oregon, and stayed there. Instead of staying in Portland, we're avid supporters of the Timbers Army and the Timbers Soccer. So we would have loved to have stayed here, but we couldn't, we instead spent two, three thousand dollars somewhere else. And it's this revenue I think the city is missing, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I'm Betsy LaBarge, and I own Mount Hood Vacation Rentals. I've been in business almost 23 years, I'm very actively involved in the short-term rental industry, and I've served on many boards nationally and locally, and I currently serve with Clackamas County Tourism Development Council, and I chair the marketing committee. And so to me, tourism development is very important, and the short-term rental industry is very important, especially through traditional short-term rental, and that is the door number three you mentioned, maybe that's what we're going to start calling it, is door number three. But it is really being ignored here, and that is a concern to me. If you look at the Airbnb listings, over 1,000 are entire home, which implies the host isn't there. So it is already happening, as you said, and not to say we should legalize everything that's ever happening, except for this is a good type of activity. It does create a lot of economic benefit. We have the Economic Impact Report that was done in 2013 for Portland, and it shows a lot of benefit, including, number one, the transient occupancy taxes that are not being collected now. City of Portland at 6%, Multnomah County at 5.5%, and the state of Oregon at 1%. And that's a lot of money that you're not getting, and until this regulation is well-thought-out and enforceable and covers that, there's a lot of income that's not being noticed by the municipalities. Secondly, I'm concerned that you're looking at only primary homes. There are a lot of examples where there could be a second home. One of my clients at Mount Hood also owns a condo as a second home in Portland, and he lives in Texas. He chooses to rent his home out at Mount Hood, he doesn't have an opportunity to rent his second home here, he does work full-time, it's not like he's here a lot, but he does come occasionally because he has kids in Portland, so they bought a second home in Portland. It would be a nice benefit for them to be able to rent it legally. And so I would really like to encourage you to consider how to include second homes in this and not make it just be primary homes. Other people have already talked about the economic benefit and, you know, the demographics of those people who rent, how much money they spend, two, three grand on a vacation, easily. And so we're missing that opportunity here. And I do just want to say thank you for looking at things like inspections and safety as a property manager for this many years. I'm always looking at that, and personally, I would love to have the professional inspector come tell me, back me up. So I'm not the one who's saying, yeah, that railing is safe, that deck is safe, that electrical is safe, because that's what I do now. Nobody's telling me that I'm right, but I think I am, I mean, I don't know. So I really applaud you for taking a deeper look at a lot of those issues that you were questioning in the last public hearing a month ago. And I also will volunteer my time to be of any assistance to you, I've been actively involved in this for 22 years, served nationally on boards, please call on me, I'm happy to help you find connections.
Yeah, I should say this to anyone, make sure our staff has your contact info, if they don't already.
Which staff person?
Right behind you, the two, two right there, Susan Anderson and Sandra Wood.
They're going to get a bunch of business cards.
Because we are going to need to draw on the industry to figure this out, so thank you. Good afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Judy Crockett, and I live in close-in southeast Portland, and I'm here supporting the proposed changes. I retired from the city about six years ago, and in that time period, the cost of living has gone up 10%, as has my property tax, and my pensions have not kept up with that. And renting out one room in my home has been very useful, not only in making up that gap, but also allowing me to make changes and improvements to my home. For example, this last year, I had the home, which is even older than I am, attached to its foundations so that it would be safer in terms of an earthquake. Two of my neighbors, Mrs. Galucci and Mrs. Carlson, lived in their homes until they were either in their mid-90s, or in Mrs. Galucci's case, 102, before this last year, they both moved into the same nursing home. I'd like to be able to do that very same thing in my neighborhood. I have been renting out with Airbnb for three years, and when I began looking at it, I tried to comply with every possible regulation short of spending $4,000 to get a zoning change. I put in easy access, easy exit windows, I put in a CO2 monitor, extra fire alarms, I did everything that I possibly could, got more insurance, got my food handler's license so I can provide a nice experience for the guests as well as a really great breakfast. In addition, every year I've spent about an extra $2,000 of buying supplies and food for the guests, so I am hopefully pumping a little bit of money into the economy. I think I would love to be able to come out and be operating legally, and I have no problem with paying taxes, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much.
The next three are Nicole Pelts, Deborah Imzy, and Alisa Christensen, and they'll be followed by Albert Dormeyer, Rosemary Brown, and Jeff Rheingold.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Am I first?
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alisa Christensen. I moved to Portland in '06 after being injured in Los Angeles. I was burned and had brain damage, so that's why I speak slow and with a stutter, so please excuse me, I'll try to be concise. I started, in, Los Angeles is a huge metropolis, there's a lot of burn support. When I moved up here, there was only one burn unit for the whole state and no burn support. So I started Portland Burn Survivors, a not-for-profit dedicated to helping burn survivors get back on their feet, and for their friends and family too, because burns take so long to heal. And with, my income is fixed since I was in a union when I was injured, I'm getting my pension early, and so I have enough money to live on myself, but I don't have enough money to fund my corporation. So what I do is, instead of attaching my social security number to the MasterCard that Airbnb pays me through, I attached Portland Burn Survivors EIN, so now we have money to give burn survivors that, say, call me up and with, you know, I can't pay my mortgage this month, can you do anything for me? I can say yes. They call me up and saying, I haven't been able to pay my phone bill for three months, it's going to get shut off, can you pay it? I can say yes. So for that reason alone, I think you should really, really consider this, and as far as taxes go, I paid $3,000 in tax when I first bought my house, seven years later, I'm paying over $4,600. I pay enough in taxes, and I really don't think that we should pay more. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for what you're doing. Thank you. Deborah, welcome.
Good to be here. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Commissioners, my name is Deborah Imzy, and I am the Executive Director for Multifamily Northwest. Our members represent over 180,000 units of rental housing. As City Council considers short-term rental issues, it's critical that landlord-tenant law, long-term lease agreements, and affordable housing issues are understood and addressed in both single-family and multifamily units. The lease is the heart of landlord-tenant law and covers the rights and obligations of both the resident and the landlord. Most leases prohibit subletting or running a commercial business in the unit. In short, it's the rule rather than the exception that renters are not allowed to do those two activities. It's critical that the city not mislead prospective permit applicants about their ability to do these short-term rentals, or appear to allow an activity that is not permitted by another contract. I realize that the short-term rentals like Airbnb maybe are going on currently in rental units where the lease prohibits it. The reality is that our members get complaints all the time. What we don't know is how many of those complaints are non-paying guests which are allowed, and how many are generated by a prohibited short-term rental. The question has been asked over the last few days a lot, why delay consideration for multifamily properties? Frankly, because multifamily housing simply has not been at the table and has not had the same vetting and public process as the single-family structures, as it was removed from consideration early on in the process. Multifamily Northwest urges the council to adopt some protections for the single-family units that will be legal. One, no permit application should be accepted unless the owner agent approves, no inspection should be scheduled unless the owner agent authorizes it, and short-term rental sites should commit that they will not list any rental unless a permit has been issued. With these owner protections in place for single-family rentals over the next two years, everyone will be able to get some real data on what works, what needs improvement, and what unintended consequences need addressing. Before we take on the more complicated issues of multifamily rentals, we need to look at this 2016 report. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns, and I look forward to working with you as you make your decisions on short-term rental policy.
So Deborah, I think from our standpoint, I might need to bring staff up and talk about this, but our code in terms of land use doesn't really make a distinction between a condominium building and an apartment building. It's different from a legal standpoint, but take a piece of CXD property downtown, you can build a building on it that has a bunch of housing units, and you can either rent them out, or you can sell them. And in fact, you could start doing one and then change your mind and start doing something else. So I think from a land use standpoint, one of the reasons why we are interested in opening door number two, if I could go back to my silly metaphor, is that we're just trying to decide, should we enable the transaction to happen legally? In order for it to happen legally in an apartment building, we're proposing that the owner of the apartment also be involved in the decision, obviously, and in the case of a condominium, that the homeowners association also be involved, because in each case, the occupant of that multifamily building has a contract with somebody else. If I'm a condo owner, I have a contract with my condo association, if I'm a renter, I have a contract with my landlord. The proposal in front of us tries to respect that relationship, I hope you agree, and so waiting to deal with the buildings that are in a city that's becoming more dense, waiting to deal with the buildings that have more than one unit in them seems a strange option to me. So if we're able to get that basic protection for the lease, which we think we have here, if you want a permit to have, to operate a short-term rental in your apartment unit, you have to have your landlord's approval, we think we've checked that box, but help me more with that.
I'd be happy to. I mean, I think that right now we're saying for our, so we have members that are with one unit, mom and pop, all the way up to 18,000 units. So what we're saying is, we haven't, we're putting something on the table that we don't even know is going to work yet. It isn't, you know, we need to take a look and see what are the outcomes in a much more restricted way. For instance, on a single-family home, that address gets posted on Portland maps. When you have a unit that is doing this, that doesn't get posted on Portland maps. We have a lot of issues around, for instance, a tax credit property, they have to affirm their income, so if they affirm their income and they're also getting this other income over here, they're out of balance, there's a, when you rent an apartment, you sign probably 20 documents. What we are seeing happen already is this discussion is leading people to think that this is something that they will be able to do, when in most cases they won't be able to do. That having been said, why not vet all the issues that might come up and then develop a policy, if in fact a policy should be developed?
Mayor, can I just pose a few questions?
Sure, please.
And Deborah, you still serve on the Housing Advisory Commission?
Portland Housing Bureau, yeah.
And so, in my experience working with Metro Multifamily, for example, colleagues, we've had some sharp disagreements in the past, or put it this way, there are times when I would not want to walk in Deborah's shoes, because her caucus has sharp disagreements on issues, whether it's Section 8, or fair housing, or whatever. So what I can say is that we've taken, when we've taken the time to work through these issues, we've usually gotten to the right place. We would not have had Section 8 reform or progress in fair housing without the industry standing side by side, and we didn't always start at the same place, but at the end we got there. So Deborah, walk us through your view of, we have an amendment that's on the table that says this would be allowed if the landlord, in the case of multifamily rental housing, signed off on it. Is it likely that a landlord, and you've previously said that most of these leases have at least one, if not two, express prohibitions, no commercial activity, no subletting, so it's already baked into the lease agreements, you can't do it. Under what circumstances can you imagine a landlord agreeing to this transaction? And two, is there a possibility that in agreeing to the transaction, the landlord could attempt to exact new terms and conditions for the lease agreement?
So I could see a situation, and some were mentioned here, where a landlord has a small, you know, 10-unit, and they're living in that unit, and they want to make a decision to rent out, you know, a couple of those units, and they may have long-term renters as well. And so in that case, you're talking about the owner, that's fine, there's no problem in that. So that's an arrangement that I could see as a possibility, because the owner is allowing, and maybe if they have short-term rentals there, maybe they don't care if their residents have short-term rentals as well. I don't see the liability for multifamily property. I do not see a situation in which a landlord would go along with that program. You're talking about other residents that entered into leases expecting that they were going to be in a, have the quiet, safe enjoyment of their building, and now people that haven't been screened are coming into their area, sharing their common area, and that's not what the other tenants signed on for.
So additionally, have you had a chance since this conversation started, this debate, to look at the experience of other cities, and have you learned anything about other cities that you believe should guide our deliberation?
Well, I think that we need to look at some more experience, but I, because nobody's had a lot of experience, and Portland is frankly on the leading edge of trying to have some regulation around this issue. But I will say that San Francisco has serious concerns about this situation depleting the availability of affordable housing, because people are taking their units off the market and just doing short-term rentals.
Deborah, another issue of concern to me, and anything that we regulate, is to make sure that our regulation, our ability to enforce regulations, that we have the ability to enforce our regulations. We can spend all day crafting sensible regulations, but if we can't enforce them, then we got a problem. So we've heard from a lot of people who've come before us saying that they are renting out their apartment. So apparently, there's a lot of people in Portland in violation of their lease. To what extent is the industry taking steps to police that? Or are you unable to police that?
Well, it is not easy to police because of, you know, what I just, you know, said about the unit not being listed on Portland maps. I will tell you that, like the city of Portland, this is a new issue for my members, a recognition that some of what's going on in the property may in fact be prohibited by the lease. And we've had some discussions, we have a board meeting in a couple of weeks in which this is the topic of how we are going to regulate it. It is a serious enough offense in violation of the lease that they will either stop it or they will be evicted. And frankly, my members are in the business of renting, they're not in the business of evicting, and don't want to be in that business.
So I think the basic disagreement I may have with this amendment is, the mayor's offered, is that, I think my preference is, we pull industry together, spend six months discussing this, brainstorming, looking at the issues, seeing if we should, if it can be regulated effectively, and come back to council for that discussion. The mayor's approach would be essentially saying, we're going to allow this as of January 1st, and then spend the next six months working out the details. Do you have a strong view of either approach?
Well, I believe the preference that we Well, I believe the preference that we would have is that we sit down, collaborate in a room, iron out all the issues, the possible concerns around liability. It, it concerns me that Oregon On, that represents all our nonprofits in the state, hasn't, hasn't been in a room to weigh in on this, to see what impact it would have on the affordable housing side of the equation, when we know that at least in San Francisco, that's been a concern. So I'm happy to roll up my sleeves and work hard to try to take a look at all these issues and see if it makes sense for the city of Portland. And, I mean, I'm all for the economic viability of our city as well, but I just want to make sure that we're putting together good public policy, that, one of the gentlemen was up here, it says, people look to Portland and look to Austin as samples of where good policy is made, and I'd like to make sure that this is one of those times when we're making good policy.
Finally, Mayor, I appreciate the dispensation, just to make a record. You said Oregon On. One of the things that concerns me is that, is that I can think of a dozen contexts in which there's rental housing, but because of the funding source for developing the housing, there's a different set of rules. So there are different sets of rules around Section 8, there are different sets of rules around tax credit, there's different sets of rules around public housing, there's different sets of rules around, around non, housing done by Habitat with different pots of money. You can go on and on. And what appears on the surface to be a question of multifamily, to me, is a very complicated question. And there are equitable issues there, about who can and can't take advantage of this if we allow it. And so it's one of the reasons why, I'm just speaking for myself, I feel we have a substantial record here to decide how this applies to single-family. I feel like we're flying blind in the multifamily. There may be a path forward on multifamily, but I would like to see the same care and attention to building a record on that issue that we had with the single-family, because I'm actually at a point where I feel very comfortable moving forward with a single-family. I think, I think the record is, is, gives us some clarity about regulation. So I appreciate, do you, do you have any members in your association who've indicated to you that they are interested in exploring a change in the, what's been the traditional practice of prohibiting this kind of activity, and move to one where it would be either allowed or encouraged?
So, no, I don't. In fact, I had a lot of alarm bells, the closest, that we do have a member that does do short-term renting for, you know, corporate and some other situations, and they handle it just like they would a long-term renter. That person's screened, a background check is done, and, you know, their recommendation would be that anytime you're putting somebody in a property where you don't have a background check would be inappropriate.
Well, Deborah, I've got to say, first of all, we're, we're not in a court of law, we're not here to build a record. We're here to make common sense decisions in real time about things that are already happening. So secondly, as a, both a former representative of the Multifamily Housing Council, and as a landlord, I'm, frankly, I'm puzzled that you don't want us to do this for now. That is, this is illegal today. It might also be in, in violation of people's leases today. Or there might be landlords, in fact, I don't have a provision in my lease that prohibits this, I don't plan to. But I'm perfectly free to do that today, and I'll be perfectly free to do that the morning after this ordinance goes into effect. And in fact, I will also have the city of Portland with an open and fairly clear registration program for people that want to do this, that requires my signature. So why wouldn't, as a landlord, why wouldn't I want the city to do that? I'm just puzzled by your position, that, sure, we might refine this more later, but wouldn't a good starting place be doing what we have in front of us now, which is to say, of course, we're not invading your lease, of course, we're not invading your homeowners association agreement, but if you have a tenant who wants to rent out their second bedroom, they have to check with you first, prove that they've checked with you, and then get a permit from the city. Why wouldn't you want us to do that, for now?
Well, the reason I wouldn't want you to do it for now is, is I'm not convinced that it should be done at all. So until the conversations that need to happen, and until we know what the unintended consequences of the policy might be, and rather, putting it in place today and then dealing with the fallout, sounds much more difficult for my members than walking through the process, knowing, as Commissioner Fish mentioned, there are a lot of different, there are affordable housing contracts that won't ever allow this.
Sure, then prohibit it, then say, you can't do that in this unit.
Right. And I, I think I and other landlord associations would like the opportunity to figure out what those all are, so we can educate both our members and our residents on what they can do and can't do. And if it goes into play immediately, there is no education for a very complex process.
Okay, thank you.
I go back to my experience on Section 8 and fair housing, where actually, I had a philosophical disagreement with Metro Multifamily on some level, and we, we worked through those issues to get to a consensus, and the industry came along and it, and developed best practices along the way. And that, I think we're talking six of one half dozen, I don't actually see a fundamental issue here, other than, we spent a lot of time having a administrative body look at something, consider the intended, unintended consequences, develop guidelines, we had a work session, we've had two public hearings, we've had amendments, and that has produced, in my opinion, in the area of single-family residents, a thoughtful record upon which to act. I don't feel the record before us is sufficient to start making bets about what might or might not work with multifamily, and, which is why I think we should take a time out, spend the time to, to study it, come back with a proposal that would hopefully have the blessing of your industry. We may still do it over your objection, but my experience with Metro Multifamily is we usually get to the right place at the end.
Yep. I had a couple of questions. One is, I mean, do you think it is true that there's a fair amount of this going on now?
You know, I guess it's what's fair amount. The last number I heard was that there were 1,500 listings, and I think it's, I've mentioned to some of you, and I'll mention it again, I, the documents that they have to sign, I'm guessing that there are folks out there that don't know their lease prohibits it, and are in fact, doing it.
And, I mean, have there been, to date, a bunch of evictions for people breaking their lease by doing this?
Well, I, this is very new to our radar screen. So the answer is, I don't, I, I don't think that there has been a lot of evictions as it relates to this issue, because I don't think a lot of members, as I mentioned in testimony, it would be difficult to know whether or not it was a guest that had caused the problem, or, you know, the, they're not going to say, you know, this was my illegal thing I was doing. If there's a problem or a complaint, it's going to be handled in terms of the resident, not the guest, or the short-term rental.
You're right. 1,500 sounds like a lot, but I guess it is limited. I mean, it seems to me that if this were a widespread practice already, then you should have seen a surge in complaints about unwanted people on properties, and already seen some evictions.
Yes, you know, I think it would have, I'm guessing, Commissioner, it would have been on our radar screen if, if, earlier, if that was the case. BDS says 25% of single-family homes are rentals, I mean, there, some piece of that 1,500 is obviously single-family homes.
So, I mean, is it, your concern, I mean, if what's going on now hasn't really bubbled to the surface as a major issue for your members, is your concern really that if the city puts its imprimatur in this practice, then there will be a big surge in the number of people doing it, and that might cause problems you haven't seen to date?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And is the, are there, I mean, is this advanced enough, and I mean, in the places that have decided to start recognizing and regulating this, has there been, I mean, do we know if there's been an acceleration in the number of people doing it? Or did, was it just sort of the, the same kind of growth in places that aren't authorizing it as in places that are?
I don't, I don't have that data. I could, I could get it for you and see if it's out there.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Pels, and I just want to say that I love, love, love Portland. I've been here for 34 years, and I love sharing my enthusiasm and my love of Portland with Airbnb people. I live in Selwood, and all I can say is I've had nothing but positive experiences for the past three years. But I'm not here for that. I'm here because this woman, who's also an Airbnb renter, couldn't be here, and she asked me to read her testimony. Her name's Judy Cox, and I'll be fast. "I am, I am a recently widowed woman, living on $1,100 social security per month, my only income, until Airbnb saved me from homelessness and complete destitution. All our savings from selling our house were gobbled up with medical bills in the past two years. When my husband died, I found I had less than a third of the income, because I had just my social security or his, not a combination. Also, his pension stopped when he passed away. Enter Airbnb. I have never enjoyed and experienced so much. I'm no longer so lonely, I can afford to have enough food to live on, and I can pay for my two-bedroom apartment. I have met the most interesting, intelligent, sweet, courteous people, who are helping our economy by frequenting, frequenting Powells, bookstore, restaurants, food carts, breweries, coffee places, voodoo donuts, Saturday market. Not to mention, the money I receive is funneled back into the community, and I am not living off welfare, and I'm pulling my weight to make this community better. It is discriminatory to decide that apartments and condos should not be allowed to host guests for Airbnb. There's absolutely no difference from my quiet, soundproof apartment, and all my guests are wonderful about respecting my neighbors and are quiet and unintrusive." Then she gives a couple examples of past guests, but basically, she just wants to, "Please consider that not only are my guests greatly adding to Portland with their visits, but I am not homeless or destitute, and that apartments and condos should be treated no differently than many homes of the high-density neighborhoods. Thank you. Sincerely, Judy Cox."
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you all. Appreciate you being here.
Can I, can I say one quick word? It's in to response to the gentleman who suggested that maybe Airbnb is taking away from hotels. Over half of the guests I've had have been late teens, early twenties, traveling with their dog. They would never be allowed into a hotel, and they spend all their money, like, I live in Selwood too, they spend their money at the movie theater, at the bars, at the restaurants, at the coffee shops. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The next three are Albert Dormeyer, Cynthia Braun, and Jeff Reinhold, and they'll be followed by Sharon Garrett, Erin Case, and Julie Gabron.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Hello.
I think you're on first. You bet.
I'm Albert Dormeyer. I'm not going to go through my whole testimony, because much of it's been said already, except for I am here as, not as a host, I'm here as a member, and somebody who's used shared experiences. I wanted to just give support to this kind of a system, in the sense that last year, I went for 35 days to Europe, and used Airbnb for 33 of those days. I can't tell you what a great experience that was, and I've traveled to Europe about 10 times. The opportunity to be in neighborhoods that you wouldn't be in otherwise, and let me just transfer that to being in Selwood instead of downtown Portland, or being in Southeast Division instead of being in downtown, not that there's anything wrong with downtown, because that's where I live, but I just can't tell you the different experience that we had in going to the neighborhoods, and how great the hosts were, and how great Airbnb was. We, we ended up at a place which they had double-booked us, in Nice, France, and we showed up, and we didn't have a place. Airbnb found us a place in 45 minutes and bought our dinner. And I just think Portland is one of those places that, that just represents who we are, to be in this. In terms of the, the regu, rules and regulations, I leave that up to you. The taxes, I leave that up to you. I'm not in it for that. I, I am in it for the support of us doing it as a city, to get those people here. And if you read the reports or saw the news, our tourism is up last year, they expect it to be up again. We're getting free press all over the world. When I go to Europe, I went to Florence, Italy, and Portland, oh, you came from Portland. So I just want to, I'm just here to lend that support. I also want to make a comment from my host, who was in Italy, who, in Florence, Italy, who said that for years, they, they don't have any laws surrounding it, they don't collect taxes. And for years, he had two units, which he said was a nightmare to administer. The minute that Airbnb came along to administer it for him, and to insure him, and to actually vet the people, because there is a pre-vetting there, it just made his whole life as a, as a landlord, much easier. I'd like to see us to pull it all in, so that we all know who's renting where. I think that we all, I'm on your side about the apartments and condos. I don't think they're going to stop. And I, I don't think until the city comes back and puts regulations in place that watch over that, that it, that is going to stop. You're just, you're just delaying the inevitable. At some point, you're going to have to say, stop it, no, or yes, we're going to. So that wasn't anything that I was going to say when I came up here, but everybody else said rest for me. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Braun. I didn't plan to speak, so I, I hope you can follow me. I've been a landlord for about 20 years, and my concern, although I completely support Airbnb, and obviously, a lot of people do, my concern is that, for instance, I could make three to four times as much money doing Airbnb as I do having a long-term rental. So my concern is, I know particularly, I think the most recent statistics are that a third of Multnomah County residents are unable to meet their monthly obligations. And I know, looking for a rental for my daughter a couple of years ago, and helping my son right now, the market is so tight for a normal rental. I just am concerned that Airbnb would drastically reduce the available rental market for long-term renters. That's one concern I have. And then as a landlord, I have never used a rental agreement that would allow subletting, and I wouldn't. I think that the obvious thing about subletting any kind of rental is that you've got your renter, renter, collecting a lot more money off of your property. And that doesn't make any sense. I wouldn't allow it, period. Plus, there would be a liability, because whoever was staying there would not be covered under the rental agreement, which includes damages, deposit, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a concern I have. Let's see. I have a, I think, I think I talked about my concern being eliminating normal rental, rental housing available market, and I see having apartments and condos having an impact on that also. Once they find out that you triple your rental income, or quadruple it by doing an Airbnb, why would they go back to a normal rental? I guess the same thing, I'm thinking, would apply to condos and apartments, so that's a concern. And my friend who gave me her time, there's a difference between small multifamily, that is owner-occupied, and apartment rentals. I would suggest that these be differentiated, especially duplexes. Under current proposals, can ADUs be rented? And I don't think, I don't know that that's been addressed either, so that's another concern. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeff.
Hi, Mayor Hales, how are you? And Commissioners, thanks for letting me speak today. I'd like to suggest that, I'm Jeff Reinhold, with Income Property Management, we're at 721 Southwest Oak. I'd like to suggest, following up Deborah's comments, that we just hit the pause button on the multifamily housing issue for a variety of reasons, many of which could involve some of what I think would be unintended and adverse consequences. First of all, and I think this is important to all of us, the affordable housing providers, many of whom I represent, have largely been left out of this conversation, and I really think that it's important that they do have some involvement. think that it's important that they do have some involvement. The data that's obtained from the single-family experiment, if you will, will be valuable in that discussion, and I think it would be very helpful. There are also, from speaking again from the affordable side, some complex issues regarding the regulation of affordable housing that have to be carefully followed. The result of not following them, of course, is pretty severe penalties that could befall both the tenant and the landlord or manager of the property. And in this particular context, I'm concerned that we need to work together to devise a verification process to make sure that if a landlord, for example, opts out, that in fact, the units in that building are not being used in the B&amp;B program. Third, I think this could very well have an impact on the overall supply of housing, particularly affordable housing in desirable areas, whether it's downtown or close in on the east side. In these high-demand areas, I think it's reasonable to assume that owners might very well take the advantage of the three or four times income levels that they could achieve using Airbnb and reduce the housing stock. We should talk about this a little bit more before we just dive into it. So I would urge the council to limit the short-term rental program for the moment to single-family residences, and at this time, let's agree to work together for however long it takes, whether it's two months or four months or more, to get an ordinance that is right and that covers some of these items that I've suggested. Thank you.
Jeff, what do you think we should do about condominiums?
Condominiums are a little different kettle of fish. They're individually owned, the units, and I think the rules may have to be somewhat altered for that versus apartments.
Okay. And who should figure that out?
Well, I think we're, I don't know if there's anyone from the CAI here testifying one way or the other, but we might want to involve the trade group.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you all.
The next three are Sharon Garrett, Erin Case, and Julie Gabron, and they'll be followed by Hannah Sandmeyer, Jack Bothwell, and Randy Edwards.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Sharon Garrett. I'm representing Grace Bible Church, which is just up the street on 12th and Clay, right downtown, one of those beautiful old historic churches that are a treasure to our city, and I appreciate the chance to briefly tell you our story because we're very excited about it. As many of the, well, first of all, my husband is a pastor, and we live in the Parsonage next door. And as many of the downtown historic churches can attest, downtown churches face unique challenges, and frankly, our church has been in crisis and at risk, really, and we have found a solution, and it's just very exciting. We have so many wonderful ministries that are part of our church, that are housed under our roof, feeding the homeless community, and we have a Portland Police Officers Rest Stop, and we also host two other churches, a Congolese ministry and a Chinese students' ministry. So so many communities under one roof, and we are also a parish ministry, so that means both inside and outside of our doors, everyone in the neighborhood is considered a member of our community. So the Hoffner House has always been open, our doors have always been open to people all around the world who have been in need of a place to stay, and even people on the streets of Portland who have needed a place. So the movement toward short-term rental seemed quite natural, and again, as I said, a solution for maintaining our building, which is, the cost of which is just staggering. Every time there's a rainstorm, we spring a new leak, and this has been enabling us to keep our doors open and to facilitate all these wonderful communities, and we are very grateful, and I feel that Portland, downtown Portland, needs, needs community, and we're doing our part in enabling that, and Airbnb has been helping us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Aaron Porecki. A little bit of background on myself. I started the company in 2010 with Amber Case, and she's mentioned, she's talked a few times here, so. We were seven people in 2012 when we were acquired by Esri, and we became the Esri Portland Office, and now we're 21 people in downtown Portland, just moved to a new office last month. It's been a fantastic experience here. Amber and I got into renting out on Airbnb because we wanted to buy a house not just to live in, but to use as an investment, and so we're doing this as an investment property as, you know, with the intent of offsetting our mortgage payments, essentially. We've been targeting our listing to a specific type of person, basically the professional people coming into Portland, so they're on short-term contracts, they're staying for anywhere from one week to eight weeks at a time, and, or people who are relocating to Portland and needing a place to stay temporarily while they're looking for a place to rent or buy. It's, you know, I explicitly don't rent to people who are looking like they're going to be here for a party on the weekend. I really want to make sure we get good guests in who are going to take care of the place, and they want a place that feels like home, they really want to get to know what it's like to live in Portland while they're staying here on their contract. Their alternative is a hotel, and they really don't want to be in this, you know, temporary place, so this house gives them a nice place to stay. As a landlord who owns property, it's really nice that I am actually doing this short-term renters because that means I have eyes on the property all the time, and I can't let things go wrong in the house. I can't let a roof leak go unnoticed for a year by the long-term tenants, so that's actually been really great. And that would apply even in the non-owner-occupied case, where it's especially nice in that case because I would have eyes watching out for me because I have to keep the property maintained well for the listing. So thanks for considering this, and I have another short story about cleaner, if you have a couple more seconds. I hired a cleaner for doing the turnover, and she's basically, she was doing regular house cleaning, but she's switched into essentially short-term Airbnb cleanings because she prefers it so much more. She's actually grown her business from herself last year to now two part-time employees. She has 11 properties that she's doing this for, so that's been a great opportunity for her as well to build a business here.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, next to you.
Are Hannah Sandmeyer, Jack Bothwell, and Randy Edwards. What about Susan Moray?
There she is.
And after them will be Julius Wiley, Michael Ponsil, Sean Solins, and then possibly Maria T. Mai.
Okay. Welcome.
And if anybody upstairs wants to move down, there's seats down here now.
Go ahead, please.
Well, my name is Hannah Sandmeyer, and I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I'll be really short and sweet because a lot of what I wanted to say today has already been addressed, but I help market and provide operational software for door number three, as we're referring to it now. So I work with professional vacation rental managers who are managing traditional short-term rentals throughout the Pacific Northwest and all across the United States. I was going to speak a lot about the microeconomic impact of vacation rentals, and it certainly applies to all three doors. I think that's been hammered pretty hard, and I think the benefits are certainly obvious. But certainly, in my experience, I get calls every day from budding entrepreneurs or even established real estate firms who are looking to offer a secondary service to their potential homebuyers. So there's really a lot of positive economic impact there. I think that's been well said, so I won't say more about that. But I certainly wanted to advocate that while this proposal takes a step in the right direction, I'm certainly an advocate that we move forward in a direction that's where we hold a larger stakeholder meeting between all representatives of all these different doors to create the best ordinance that includes, that certainly includes door number three or the traditional short-term vacation rental.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Jack Bothwell. Since August 2012, my son and I have operated two short-term condominium vacation rentals. During this timeframe, we have generated $96,000 in gross revenue, and I'm proud to say we've paid $11,410 in city, county, and state transient taxes. We have the signs posted in the units that we are registered with the revenue department. I would suggest, besides having it listed on the website, that, you know, that it's, that everyone needs to have those posted. We have been ambassadors for Portland to over 400 guests, plus their friends and families. We have had guests from Australia, France, Israel, Brazil, England, Scotland, Switzerland, Holland, Canada, Mexico, and Sweden. We have been successful due to Airbnb. We acknowledge that much of our competition may not have been paying the transient taxes in the past, but Airbnb has rectified that and is beginning to collect the tax directly and remitting it to the government bodies. If you implement the six- or nine-month residency restriction, that's going to put us out of business because we do not occupy the units, I can understand why some neighborhoods may not want vacationers, but apartments and condos seem to be a natural fit. We have never had a complaint because of noise. All apartments and condominiums are required to have sprinkler systems, so safety is not an issue.
Great. Can I ask you a question? And you don't have to answer this, but does your homeowner associations know you're doing this with your condo units?
They do now. Yeah. No, I, actually, yeah.
It's just an important issue that's been running through the discussion today, so I had to ask, yeah.
No, no, that's fine, and each homeowner's associate is not uniform, you know, some of them have a seven-day minimum, and some of them have a 30-day minimum, so unless you read the bylaws, they're not consistent, and I know that, you know, some of the people are ignoring the bylaws, and then homeowners' associations sometimes vary as far as fining people who are in violation, or so, it just varies.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Who's next, Scarlett?
I've got, I'm not sure if Susan Moray, Suzanne Moray, Julius Wiley, Michael Ponsil, Sean Solins, Maria T. Mai, Sandy Nico.
Maria, you're up. I think we're losing people here, so.
If I call your name, if I call your name, come on up. Sandy Nico, Sue Carter-Low, Rosemary Brown, and Kim Gordon. No, I think we've got three coming up now.
Okay, we've got three.
Sorry. Maria, Maria.
So, welcome, and, Maria, yeah, okay. So we will start with you, ma'am, and just give us your name, and you have two minutes. We'll start with you.
I'm Sue Carter-Low, and good afternoon, Mayor Hales and commissioners, and again, thank you for your time and attention to this issue that my husband and I are being blamed for bringing to your attention. I, number one, I didn't intend to talk about this, but number one, I strongly agree with one of your first speakers that suggested that you put on your agenda later to address the policy about inspections for the long-term rentals, for safety and so on. We have one across the street from us that has five young people going in and out, no egress in the window, the owner lives overseas, so it is something that needs to be addressed if you're going to encourage inspections of short-term rentals as well. Number two, I'm concerned about the current complaint-driven system that we have. We already have noise and traffic regulations that are enforced, but even after the, we stopped short-term renting over a year and a half ago, we've continued to have the same neighbors complain, and making these complaints are oftentimes, you know, not truthful, it's over-exaggerated, and so what I'm hoping, one example is during my mother-in-law's funeral, there were cars from out of town and a complaint-driven, who were staying at our house for the funeral, complaint was made to the city. We got a call the day of the funeral that we're out of compliance. We have people with cars from out of state. If we have a house sitter, we get a complaint. So once this is passed and we get our license, we know that we're going to continue to get some untrue complaints. Like, for example, right now, because it's close to passing, there's a sign next door in our neighborhood from the same neighbors, "Get the Hales out of our neighborhood." And so I have had guests that are long-term intimidated, flyers sent around, spreading untrue things in Laurelhurst, the street where we live. So I am hoping that the neighbor-to-neighbor announcement, when you're short-term and you're licensed, will be encouraged by the city. We've also contacted mediation services, which have been ignored, but before complaints come that are oftentimes unfounded and taking time up from city inspectors and so on, I will hope that you will strongly encourage the neighbor-to-neighbor communication, mediation, and hopefully that will take care of things. And as far as the signs go, you know, I'm sorry about that.
I want to officially thank the mayor for generating that sign because it replaced another sign that used to say, "Get the fish out of our water." I appreciate.
It's a liability of having a certain kind of name. Both cases.
Yeah. I'm sorry about it, but it's also on the car, we have driveways that touch each other, so it's also on the car window of the neighbor's car when you drive up, and we know it's directed, you know, at us, but we do have other nice neighbors that say, "When the city decides on something, we intend to acknowledge it, enforce it, and support it." So I don't want you to think it's the whole Laurelhurst.
Good. Thank you. Good afternoon. Who's next?
My name is Rosemary Brown. I apparently am the other Rosemary Brown because you had one earlier. I own a small seven-unit garden apartment building on Hawthorne. Each apartment is 350 square feet and has one bedroom. I've lived in and managed this building for eight years. After I bought the building, I put thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into making the building safe, functional, and charming because I think my tenants deserve this. I would like to have the flexibility to have a few short-term rentals in this building while continuing to provide some standard apartment renters. I have no idea if this is something that's ever been considered. I understand that it is likely that there will be a delay of some months until you can get your hands around the multifamily issue, and I wondered what you plan to do in the meantime with those currently operating apartments which are being used as short-term rentals in my neighborhood. And that's all.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? And thank you for taking the time to stick around and testify. So you're the first person who's actually posed this, framed your testimony in this way, that you own a multiplex, that you would like the flexibility of renting out apartments and participating directly with Airbnb or some provider, and convert those rentals into essentially short-term rentals through a provider. I think you're the first person who's actually made that case. So I have two questions for you. The first is, would, assuming we gave you that authority under the law, would you be willing to allow your tenants who are subject to, you know, a lease agreement, to have the flexibility to participate in these programs as well? In other words, would you give them the permission to act as essentially the landlord for purposes of renting out their apartments in the same way that you seek it for yourself?
You have to understand, these are 350-square-foot apartments with one bedroom. I think it's unlikely that the folks living there as permanent tenants would find it I think it's unlikely that the folks living there, as permanent tenants, would find it appropriate or comfortable to have someone else living there.
They don't have to be there at the same time. So if they wanted to rent them out for the week that they're on vacation, would that be okay with you?
Nobody in my apartment has ever taken a vacation.
But would you, but if, under a proposal we're considering, a tenant in your building could only participate in this program if they got your permission, can you foresee a situation where you would give your tenants the permission to deal directly with third parties like Airbnb and rent out their apartments whenever they want?
Only if I had the option to do some screening.
You'd want to do some screening. And on the units that you might just take off the market and use for short-term rentals, is the principal benefit to you that you could make a lot more money per unit?
It's hard to keep up with the costs of managing my building without getting higher rents and/or finding a financial stream that is better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, commissioners. My name is Maria T. Mai. Okay, Wikipedia, Vermont, and Airbnb, these three things, seemingly different, have one thing in common. They share a belief that a shared economy emphasizes extrinsic social values. Vermont's is the first state to legislate a low-profit, limited-liability corporation. These L3Cs generate modest profits with a primary aim to significant social benefits. Wikipedia's success is attributed to a ragtag band of volunteers applying open-source principles. Airbnb operates on a shared economy. Social media offers a self-policing style to standards. I believe that council should invest in a larger citywide vision for shared economies. It needs a business model that uniquely reflects our new economies. This model needs to support emerging entrepreneurs as shared economy and community values. To develop this new business model, council needs to consider three things. The distinctions between Airbnb and hotels. The Bureau of Development Services, BDS, their operating structures and for inspections. And three, Airbnb's contribution to neighborhoods and the Portland economy. There are inherent differences between hotels and Airbnb properties, including tax abatements, random inspections, ownership, and neighborhood connection. The Economist magazine says Airbnb has only nibbled at the hotel industry's economies, occupancy. Just last month, Metro struck a deal to subsidize the Hyatt Regency Hotel to the tune of $60 million. Metro will draw on hotel taxes to pay the Hyatt. City Council agreed to let lodging taxes be reallocated from tourism efforts. I want to say something about BDS too, is that BDS only inspects properties once a construction permit is pulled. The inspection is paid for by property owners and specific to the construction permit. There are no random inspections. If BDS requires to inspect properties, what's the funding and staffing mechanism for that? What's the criteria? How will, who and how will that be selected? The question remains whether random inspections are a Fourth Amendment violation, let alone being invasive intrusion to homeowners' personal properties.
Let me just respond to that. The proposal is that every permit would be inspected and paid for with the permit fee.
Not random.
And the operating, I mean, is this built into BDS currently or is there another system?
Under the current system. That there's staffing capacity to do the inspections for the fee that covers the cost of the inspection.
I believe that there are more details to be worked out with that, and I'd like to see the plan on that. I also believe that we should have a shared emerging economy model, and that's a new model. And so I suggest that council take a step back and look at a business model that addresses this new economy. And it's not just Airbnb, it's, there's a lot of other small businesses, emerging economies out there. So I think this is the time to craft a new business model that considers these new economies.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, how many more do we have, Carly?
The last three I show who have signed up are Paul, oh, sorry, Kim Gordon, Paula Wade, and Kathy Bushman.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. My name is Kim Gordon-Cumbo, and I have lived in Portland for 27 years, all in southeast. A year and a half ago, my husband and I started an Airbnb so that I could decrease my time, full-time work at OHSU due to a diagnosis of degenerative joint disease in my hips, back, and pelvis. Airbnb has helped me to be able to do that, and what I have been able to do with that is to put more time into my other one rental. And I just wanted to say a quick note about the multifamily. I, as a landlord, did put into my lease that the tenant would not be able to sublet. I personally, like I do with my own home, like vetting people who come into my space. So I love that about Airbnb. I also have a business license. I also pay, am current with transient tax. I do have that little, that form that I will tack up on my bedroom wall as soon as I get home. But today, what I want to talk about is the requirement of a home inspection for Airbnb homes. From previous meetings, I went online to find the specs for the proposed home inspection and what would be checked, and I couldn't find one. When I went to the city of Portland online, I couldn't find a checklist of what is currently checked during a home inspection, and there wasn't one there either. I feel this is somewhat unnerving. As we have heard at earlier meetings, the home inspector, whose name I don't recall, said that they could not be blind to other code violations beyond the code of the bedroom. I would like to know what exactly the home inspectors for an Airbnb home inspection will be and won't be looking at when they come into my home. I have a 104-year-old four-square Craftsman home in Lads Edition, and as far as my husband and I know, the house is up to code. And it's been perfectly safe for us to live in, raise children, have parties, rent a room to a roommate, and host foreign exchange students. Has anybody here had their home inspected before having family and friends arrive for an in-home stay for anywhere between a night and a couple weeks? I doubt it. I believe you are opening a Pandora's Box for roommates, family, friends, and foster parents if you require a home inspection in an owner-occupied home. And as an aside, my neighbors who own their homes, I have called the police on more than the rental next door to my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, I think you're next.
Well, I see a number-
Just give us your name for the record, Kathy.
My name is Kathleen Bushman, and I see a number of issues, especially if you're having, if you have family and friends in, you know who they are. For one thing, when you're having strangers, that's a different thing. My mother owned a motel, the best and most reasonably well-dressed and people on lownhood near the ski resorts. You could never determine who was going to do, like, damage or brand-new carpet because they burned candles directly into the carpet and left the cat in there for three days straight without a litter box. Now, this, if you are, I had a friend that I rented a room to in my own home, and because he was sick with diabetes, he had a very good job, made more than $2,000 a month, and ended up burning up my home. I'm telling you, if he hadn't been so sick at the time. He was sick with undiagnosed diabetes, and he was exhausted without sleep. So he did something stupid, or what would have been stupid if he had been in a normal physical condition. But these, when you have long-term rentals, you may not know who you're running to until they've actually been there for a while, but at least you, you're not running through so many different people. Just because people have money doesn't mean that they don't have alcohol or drug problems either. My sister, in my own family, my sister married into big money that didn't save them from alcoholism, either one of them. Old money. But this is, I'm just saying that, and what I see as the result of this, is that they seem, that this Airbnb seems to be catering to people from out of town who can afford to vacation in this economy, and it isn't most of us Portland residents, who can afford to do that. They're catering to transnational, international travelers, from what I can tell. And that's fine and dandy, but that is not going to help the average Portland community or the average Portland resident. It's going to create more homeless. I mean, I already feel like Portland policies are creating a tsunami of homeless. When the interfaith group spoke here last week, to me, I thought these are well-intentioned, compassionate people, but they're putting their finger in the dyke just as the tsunami is coming over the dyke and going to swamp them, and you, and us. Because of the policies that do, with stagnant wages, you don't want to move the minimum wage, and the rental, the average rental increase between 2000 and 2013, the average rental price in Portland jumped 25, more than 25%. That's in just six years. And with this Airbnb, that's going to, already, we've already have a chronic and bloated inflation problem with rentals. This is going to pump, it's going to make it explode.
Thank you.
And you're going to have a tsunami of homeless.
Thank you very much. Welcome. I think you get the last word.
Yeah, my name is Paula Wade. Thank you for your time today. And I'm going to keep this very brief because most of my concerns have been covered, but I just wanted to add one concern with neighborhood notifications, just asking for some consistency. As I, when I travel, I rent out my home, and I also use Airbnb throughout my own travels. And also, people are vetted, and there's reviews and whatnot, and I've had very good experiences. However, I recently learned that my, although, that my neighbors were going to open a daycare in their home, which is eight feet from my home, and that's completely legal. You don't have to do a neighborhood notification, you can have up to 10 children. So I think there just needs to be some consistency with neighborhood notifications and what is allowed in private homes, that we may be looking to restrict Airbnb, that we may not in other businesses being operated in the homes and in residential communities.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, questions? Thank you all. So I'm going to recommend we take a five-minute stretch break and-
Compassion break.
Compassion break, whatever you want to call it, and then call staff back up at 4:45. So we'll resume the hearing in five minutes. Thank you all. Thank you all.
And we've got some staff coming up to answer questions and take it from here. Okay. Commissioner Fritz, you had some questions?
I just wanted to clarify, when we had the hearing last time, we had had an ambiguous response from the state, so at the mayor's suggestion, we asked again, and I wanted Mike Leefield from the Bureau of Development Services to talk about the code implications of doing multifamily housing.
Yes. Director Scarlett did follow up with the building code divisions for the state of Oregon and asked them to clarify their position. It was a little unclear in the interpretation letter that they issued to BDS. Myself and Terry Whitehill, another building official at the bureau, were able to speak with Mark Long, the director of BCD, yesterday afternoon via phone, and he did confirm that the change of occupancy permit absolutely is required in multifamily structures for this proposed use. So he did agree verbally that a change of occupancy permit is required for these situations. He said he would be following up with additional written information, but it has not been received.
And what kind of process is a change of occupancy permit? What does that entail?
Well, it's a building permit submittal, so like any change of occupancy, if you want to convert a house where the zoning allows it and you want to convert it to a commercial building, then you would come in and show your proposal and show how you comply with the code requirements for that proposed occupancy class. And in this case, for multifamily, for R2 occupancies, they'd be proposing to go to an R1 transient occupancy, and they would have to show based on their building how they can comply with the R1 occupancy codes. And that differs. It all depends on the configuration of the building, the year of the building, things that are already in place. There will be buildings where a change of occupancy with the additions of fire sprinkler systems, exit corridors, fire rating systems, that will be difficult to meet. There will be other buildings that have been built in a code cycle that already have some of those large elements, such as fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers were required in every new multifamily building with dwelling units starting in 2004. So any building constructed or when the permit was submitted after the effective date in 2004 already has that system in place, and so the change of occupancy may not have great obstacles. It may be some signage for exiting other types of requirements, but not large structural changes, requirements for the building.
And things that were already built at the R1 or better standard wouldn't need any kind of change?
Right. So, well, if you have an occupancy of R1, then that is your given occupancy. You're not required to upgrade at this time. You're vested in that occupancy, and so this would be an allowed use.
What about all of the multifamily, whether they're rentals or condos, that are in EX zones or CX zones? How does that compare with... Is the R1 the same as the R1 that I'm thinking of?
It's not. So it is confusing. The building code has occupancy classes and includes R3, R2, and R1. That is not the same as the zoning designations for R3, R2, R1. Again, the zoning set aside, the zoning sets the policy about what uses are allowed. After the zoning says what uses are allowed, then you come in and you show how your building will comply with the building code requirements. And so in those zones, let's say in northwest Portland where there's a lot of EX zoning and you have multifamily, mixed-use buildings, they already comply with the building code occupancy classes for that space, for the units, for the commercial space, so...
And that would be R1?
R2, most likely.
Most likely, R2. So would it be fair to say that most multifamily buildings would require a change of occupancy so that then the owner of the building would have to be notified, right? If somebody came in to get an Airbnb, I mean, a short-term rental license, that would require a change of occupancy?
Right. When we're talking multifamily residential, we are talking in R2 occupancy. So when you go to motel hotel, that's an R1.
I see.
There are not R1 residential occupancies.
I see. So this actually might be helpful, Mayor, as we're looking at how to make this work, if it can make it work, that that would provide a built-in mechanism, that the building owner would be notified of the request? Because they have to have an inspection or something, right?
Correct. I mean, right. And so it would make sense that the building, we'd have owner information and authorization for the short-term rental permit, which is, again, the allowed use provision, and because the owner has to sign off on the building permit submittal at the time if they need to come in for a change of use permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Guidance and suggestions from you, Susan, or Sandra?
Well, one of the things we want to make sure that we do is that before we approve which of the amendments, so you went through, I think we did that a little convoluted there in the beginning, so go back and go through those. If you are at all interested in looking at vacation rentals, which it sounds like you might be, one option would be to do that separately, depending on what you do with multifamily. If you wanted to table multifamily till later, you could do those as a package. I can do a scope of work and come back to you and tell you what that would cost to figure that out and staff it and get it back to you. It would probably be a six-month process.
Okay. Comments on those options?
That was, you're saying that there's a way we could do doors number one, two, and three in a reasonable timeframe and come up with some suggested...
Well, hopefully, we're going to do door number one relatively soon.
Yeah. I think we can close the door.
And depending on what you decide with door number two, and then if you decide to table that for a while, I'd suggest we put it together so that we don't have to run two separate processes.
Susan, has there been any discussion of the short-term, of the vacation rental issue as part of this process, or would that have to be, would that be just from scratch?
There was some discussion in the beginning, definitely, and there was sort of a decision not to go down that road right now.
Seems to me that we've got a head of steam here and a lot of engagement, heard a lot of the positives, many of the concerns, so I don't know what it would take in terms of staffing, and that would be your call as a commissioner, but doing both the multifamily and the vacation rentals together seems like a good use of time.
To return to my own doors metaphor, having at least looked through the other two doors, I think we ought to finish the job here, I mean, in some relatively brief time period. I think we've got a high level of consensus on the council about door number one, about single-family, short-term rental code, which we have in front of us, and we have amendments that we've talked about and that we're prepared to act on. I still believe the multifamily issue is relatively simple. However, we were talking about a January effective one, January 1 effective date anyway, so I'm certainly persuaded that we ought to have some more discussion about that with people that care about it without actually changing the timetable of when the new code might go into effect. So my preference would be to withdraw, or actually to set over my own amendment about multifamily with the understanding that, again, the council's going to be returning to that question in time to have our new revised policy still in place by the first of the year, same day it would have been in place if we had acted on it today. And while we're at it, go ahead and take a, make an attempt to deal with the third door, that is, the question of vacation rentals in existing housing in the city, because it's happening, same basic question arises here, it's happening now, it's contrary to our code, what do we do about it? So we'll figure out what level of staffing and whether Sandra will leave the city if we give her this assignment.
Mayor, I think if the bureau determines that vacation rentals just start posing novel questions or issues, at the very least, knowing that we want a comprehensive proposal that's been cooked to come back to us in time so that we can act on it within the framework, within the timeline that you have set for action.
Yeah. How's that sit with you? I know it's more work, and you'll need the resources to deal with that. I understand that bureau director plea, which you're right to articulate.
The main issue is that the, if we want this to go through the Planning and Sustainability Commission, which I think would be appropriate in this case, that there's a little bit of a time lag. So, you know, it would take three or four months to work out solutions, pull stakeholders together, get, begin to basically have a draft that people could comment, and then you'd need to go through Planning Commission and then to hear. So I don't think all of that would end up so that we'd be back in this room in January. It might end up longer than that.
I guess, you know, going back to the mayor's opening remarks, when we got into this debate about the multifamily, I mean, the Planning Sustainability Commission got us to a certain point, but aren't we really capable of standing on our own legs at this point?
We need more staff work. I'm not sure why this has to go back to the commission.
Because they're...
I think it's at the policy level right now, which is us.
I think they've done a really good job on this package, and so if there are going to be code recommendations, it wouldn't take all that much longer to do the Planning Commission.
My recommendation would be then to separate the two. If you want to move multifamily more quickly, we do have a lot of good information, we can do that more quickly. We could bring something back to you and roll the vacation rental, you know, that would be put off, and, you know, we can roll that into other work plan, you know, in the next year or 18 months or something else down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think I'd be inclined to do that. I mean, I just wanted to state for the record the specific issues that I want to look into a little more in terms of multifamily. I do want to call some members of the Planning and Sustainability Commission just to get their sense as to, you know, if they had been focusing on this issue, I mean, what process would they have wanted to follow? I mean, I tend to agree with the mayor that they're an advisory body, we are not a independent body to them, but I do want to at least sort of check in with them and see what they have to say about this issue. I'd also like to provide an opportunity for affordable housing advocates to come to us and talk about the multifamily housing issue, and maybe give them a separate session just to talk about any concerns that they might have. Because I know, I mean, I've been reading all these articles saying that affordable housing advocates are concerned about this around the country. I'd like to give our local ones an opportunity to say whether they are and if so, why. And there's a couple of pieces of research that maybe there's not much data, but there's some things I'd sort of like to at least make some phone calls and find out about. One is that if it's true that this industry has led to all sorts of upset neighbors, whether in the single-family or the multifamily context, especially in the multifamily context, I mean, I'd sort of like to call around and say, are landlords and city officials around the country dealing with lots more complaints about riotous visitors since the advent of Airbnb? Might be hard to get hard data on that, but I'd like to at least make a few calls. And second, I think it would be interesting to see, even just in Austin in the past few months, has there been an explosion in the number of Airbnbs once became officially authorized, or has there been a decline because now there's a regulatory structure? I'd at least like to make those phone calls.
And Mayor, if I could, I thought one of the most compelling pieces of testimony we had today, and it was another one of those only important hearings, Portland hearings, I mean, so interesting, and the quality of the testimony, but the woman who testified toward the end, who was the owner of, I think, a fourplex, and she was in 350 square feet per unit, she made note of the fact that her typical tenant doesn't take a vacation. I'm guessing it's mostly working-class, middle-class, affordable rental housing, and she would like the flexibility to be a direct participant in Airbnb. It's precisely that niche in the market that I'm concerned about losing affordable housing, because I think what we're doing, some cities have put in rent control to prevent loss of stock. We have a no-net loss policy of affordable housing in certain districts. My concern for the smaller landlords, and that's not necessarily who Metro Multifamily represents, there's another trade association of the smaller mom-and-pops, is that we may be fundamentally altering the market economics so that someone that does have two to four units would frankly be foolish not to withdraw them from long-term rental and participate in short-term rental, because that person can triple, quadruple their income. And that concerns me, because that is the housing that is providing last-resort housing for working-class people in our community, and I think we may be altering the market economics around that. That's not an issue that caused me to oppose regulating it. To your point, Mayor, it's happening, and we've got to get in front of it, but it may inform the council's view about what other steps we need to take to address the affordable housing inventory question, because I think that, I think she made a very compelling case as to why we're going to start losing units, particularly units in fourplexes and smaller settings.
I'd just like to put on the record my concern about the philosophy of it's happening so we need to regulate it. My experience has been that if Portlanders know the rules, they follow the rules. And so if we have 1,500 now, I think we will have many more of that once it's known that this is legal. So it's, you know, as I said, the fact that everybody else is doing it has never been persuasive to me when my children are trying to make an argument to me. It's more of a what is the best public policy? And my concerns with multifamily are that they are shared living spaces and that there are, you know, think of micro apartments, where it's intended to have a shared kitchen, maybe even shared bathrooms in some situations. It then becomes much more like a commercial business if a lot of the units are being rented out short-term, and that's where we've heard a lot of comments from the neighborhoods about residential zones versus commercial zones.
Yeah. Don't misunderstand my comment. My comment was not intended to say this is happening, we just should be passive. My point is, we, right now, have this happening at some scale in the city, and every single one of them is illegal.
Right. That's not necessarily a good reason to legalize them, though.
No, but to the extent that we have studied the question and decided that it would be better to have it regulated than unregulated, I'd rather be moving forward than sitting still. So, you know, that was my point. Again, this is happening, and the sharing economy is happening here and elsewhere pretty quickly. We don't move, we, government, don't move that quickly. Very often, we're trying to, in this case, using this RICAP model to address a code issue or two that we know we have to deal with. So here's my suggestion, and that is, my suggestion, based on this discussion, would be that we go ahead and act on the June 30th package of amendments, and we'll go back through those so that we're clear about what we're acting on and not acting on, that we set over the issue of multi-dwelling structures as an amendment, which I earlier put on the table, you know, for two months at least, maybe three, not to go back through the Planning Commission, but instead to have stakeholders that are interested in meeting with staff and further vetting these issues before we bring it back to the council in the fall. I'd like to do that. I'm persuaded that although we should be acting on the short-term vacation rentals issue, we shouldn't try to sweep that in now, but I think I am going to ask the staff to include that in the next RICAP package, because you're getting ready to start another one, right? I know. I know, this is the moment when Sandra quits. No.
Well, let's say that we'll include it in our, as a part of our work plan, and whether it's part of, I think we got a lot of hits for this wasn't a recap project in the first place.
But it needs to be addressed swiftly, not, you know, not over the space of...
Not in three years.
Mayor, I can, I would like to support your proposal, and I think if, my guess is that three months is probably a little more generous given vacation schedules, but that would mean that we come back in October and have a hearing on the package, and it still gives us the time to be nimble to meet the January 1 deadline that you've established.
Well, I'd like to put the single-family issue to rest. Act on those amendments today. The multifamily piece, we set over for three months.
Have that come back to us in October and still give us time to deliberate with the January 1 effective date if we move forward.
Yeah. Are we comfortable with that process?
And the multi-dwelling coming straight to city council, not through the planning and sustainability commission?
Yeah. We want you to meet with the stakeholders, vet the issues that we've heard about, make sure that the organizations, that some of which have spoken today, and some of which have been referred to, that have a role in the multifamily industry, particularly the affordable housing side, have a chance to influence this discussion, and then you bring it back to us. Again, we know, I think it's really important to remember while we're doing this work, that we're enacting zoning code, not a housing code. We're enacting what is legal or not legal to do on a piece of property or a building. We are not regulating the housing market. Yes, we have an effect on the housing market when we do this, I get that, but I think it's important to maintain that slightly academic-sounding distinction, that what we're trying to do is put in our zoning code what's possible, and still, as my cross-examination of my friend Deborah indicated, it's still up to every landlord to figure out what they want to allow, and up to every homeowners' association to figure out what they want to allow. And as a landlord, I know what I want to allow, and it's my choice, and it will be my choice regardless of which version of this we adopt, unless we do something radically different. So that's where I'm headed. So let me return to our amendments. Now, we have put two sets of, we've put a set of amendments and then a single additional amendment on the table, I believe, if I'm recapping this correctly, which is, in our June 30th memorandum from Sandra Wood, we have the Amendment A, which is to require an initial BDS inspection, self-certification for renewals every two years, and another BDS inspection at year six over the change of ownership. Secondly, we have Commissioner Fritz's...
Well, let's just vote on that one.
Okay. Want to vote on that one? Want to take them one at a time?
Yeah.
So further discussion on Amendment A, and a roll call on that amendment, please.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
We did hear one novel issue today, which is a Fourth Amendment claim, and I'm not the lawyer on this one, I'll defer to Commissioner Novick, but it does occur to me, since we're regulating a commercial activity, it's not really a Fourth Amendment question about unreasonable intrusions in someone's privacy, it is our police power, authority to maintain life safety issues. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay.
Mayor Hales, may I make one clarifying statement?
Sure.
Since you had previously put on the table at the last hearing the first motion and had passed that, let's, I want to be clear that the amendment that you just voted on replaces the amendment that you adopted at the last hearing.
That's correct.
So no one's confused.
That's correct. Okay. Now, on Item B, we would not have needed to take any further action except for Commissioner Fritz's friendly amendment to the carbon monoxide detector.
Which is to require the dwelling unit be located on the floor of a dwelling equipped with a functioning carbon monoxide alarm where the detector is required by law. And that's in Section 33207, 104A, 4C.
Okay. Further discussion on that amendment? Everyone clear? So let's take a roll call on that amendment.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Fish?
Okay. Did we leave somebody out? I'm sorry. Commissioner Fish?
You had the votes. Aye.
Well, yeah, still. Okay.
Tip-Lo-Neal over here, Jesus.
Item C, lost my own paperwork here. Hang on a minute. There it goes. Monitor.
Item C, you've already adopted.
We've already done that one. Okay. Then Item D, we're, the earlier motion, which I'll reiterate, is to require the resident to occupy the dwelling unit for at least nine months, as shown in this attachment. Sir, we're going to need a second. So it's already on the table, so further discussion on nine months versus six months? Okay. And then a roll call on that?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Thank you, Carla, for calling me. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. And then Item E, allowing a designee to operate the rental as opposed to only the owner occupant. Further discussion on that one? Roll call.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay. So then I will set over...
Mr. Mayor, there's also, Fitz, my little amendment about making Mr. Unger's point.
Yes. So that would be moving to amend the city code to require the license number be posted on all advertising.
Yes. Right. Okay. Roll call on that.
And in the unit?
What?
And in the unit?
Oh. Actually, it wasn't, I didn't say that, but I'd have no objection to it.
It's a friendly amendment. We heard the testimony on that. I think that would be a good thing.
Sure. So requiring the license number...
Be posted in the dwelling unit as well as in the advertisement.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay. Now, I'm going to set over my own amendment for 90 days, assuming that works out about right for calendar, and we'll set a council date roughly 90 days from now to return to that. In the meantime, I'm going to ask that the bureau staff convene the stakeholders that have been mentioned, as well as folks from the short-term rental industry that we've heard from here, to further refine this question, again, about both condominiums and multifamily housing. I don't believe we necessarily have to divide the two for purposes of dealing with the zoning code.
We would prefer not. Nothing else is divided in the zoning code in those two.
Yes. So we're going to keep those two management schemes together, because the zoning code doesn't draw the distinction, but then take up the multifamily issues that have been raised. Okay? So if there's no objection, I'm going to set that over for 90 days.
And Mayor, the only other thing, I guess, is for the benefit of people who are here, we don't have council next week, so this comes back for a second reading in two weeks, not one week.
As a matter of fact, we'll be coming back. You haven't seen the code, lost track now, incorporated. We'll come back, right? With clean code. So we'll come back...
For single family, yeah.
Yeah.
The single family on July 23rd with the clean code and a clean ordinance that reflects all of these amendments.
Okay. So that will return to council on the 23rd of July.
On the 23rd.
Great work from staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Good job.